Okay, we are ready. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting on February 4, 2020. If we can call, roll call, please.
Supervisor Zaragosa?
I'm here.
Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Parks?
Here.
Supervisor Huber?
Here.
Supervisor Long?
Here. Thank you. Supervisor Bennett, could you lead us to the pledge?
Ms. Hart, ready? Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, we have our meeting minutes from last January 21, 2020. Does anyone have any modifications, corrections to it? If so, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. All right, motion approved unanimously. We have our agenda reviewed. Mr. Powers?
Think of Chair Long. Item 31, Public Works Agency Authorization for the Integrated Waste Management Division to pay the Ventura Regional Sanitation District for EZ Fire-related repair costs at the Tierra Rahada landfill. Two comment letters from Teresa Jordan have been submitted. Item 36, CEO's Office, receive and file a presentation by Cloud Burst Consulting Group, Inc. on the draft Ventura County 2020-24 Regional Consolidated Plan. PowerPoint presentation has been submitted. Item 40, Human Services Farmworker Resource Program, a report and a PowerPoint presentation have been submitted. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisors, do you have any modifications, changes to the agenda? All right, if I can get a motion to approve as modified? It has been first, and a second. Let's vote. Motion is approved unanimously. Moving on to the moment of inspiration. First of all, it was a great honor to attend our 20th anniversary of the Alaska Flight 261, where we lost 88 people off the shores of Port Wynimi. It was an extremely touching event where so many came to love and remember. And I'd like to bring up Amit Prasad and Laura Hernandez, our mayor of Port Wynimi, to speak about this special event.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Powers and staff. I'm honored to be here this morning with the county family to share in a moment of inspiration in recognition of the 20th anniversary of Flight 261. I'd like to start off by introducing Amit Prasad, who's going to share his story about the loss his family suffered and what it meant to him and his family. And then I want to say a few words and conclude with a video. So with that, Amit?
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you again for letting me represent my family's Board of Supervisors. I appreciate you. First of all, I just want to say thank you because it's been 20 years for us coming here, 17 for me. Anrudd, my older brother, who couldn't be here, he's the one that organizes this every year. And he's come every year. And one thing that we've resoundly have mentioned within the family friends group is how amazing Ventura people have been. So Ventura, Port Wynimi, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you. So Steve Campbell has been a part of our community family for a long time. He was the ex-police chief. Our story is that out of the 88 lives in our family, we had three. My little brother and my two cousins. And my little brother and the flight attendant and a two-year-old were not found. So they're unfortunately still in the remain form. And that, if you recall or don't recall, there is a cemetery where it has a coffin for the remaining folks. So we always just, when we come here, my brother and family and I, along with the other families, it just becomes a bigger family. So and again, just looking, sitting here, visiting Ventura the last few days, being here since Thursday, I can tell you that there's no short of that family feeling outside of, you know, the memorial. So from our perspective, you know, we've, my brothers and our family members have found the resting place that makes sense. And, you know, it's not a moment that goes by that we don't think about them. It's tragic, and it's not something that we want anyone else to go through. So one of the things for the inspiration moment that you will know is that because of your support and because of our ability to continue to come here, everything has been done to make safety number one now with most airlines across the world. And so that's something that we would all want to experience again. But because we did, we want to thank you, again, from the family members group, how appreciative we are, just everyone in the community. I was walking down the beach, everyone remembers. And even if they didn't, they have a beautiful monument because of it. And I can't tell you how many people cherish that like I would. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have some pins that I'll give Laura to give out to you guys for the memory.
Thank you.
Oh, perfect. Yeah, I'll give them out to you.
Thank you so much, Amit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so 20 years ago, I got that fatal phone call. I was on an interview panel, and Dale Carnathan from my staff at the time called me and said we had an aircraft go down off our coast. And I asked him, is it private or commercial? He said, "Commercial." I said, "Passengers." He said, "Yes." I said, "Activate the EOC." And I went down to the EOC. I was the first one down there, and the phones were already ringing off the hook. The first one was CBS of New York. They asked us, "What are we going to do about this plane crash off the coast of Port Wynimi?" And all I could tell them at that point was, "We're activating our emergency operations center, and we are preparing to support the federal agencies who will be in charge." And from then on, we went into a seven-week event period coordinating the 73 agencies that responded, providing support to all those agencies out on the base at the field command post. And this event forever changed everybody's life who was involved, more so, of course, for the families, but also too for the first responders. I'm glad that Amit spoke to the changes that were affected following this tragedy because it was all not, it was, the people who perished, it was not in vain because there have been many changes made since this time. We were instrumental, this county was instrumental in affecting a major change with the National Transportation Safety Board. When Dick Rodriguez, the lead investigator showed up, we asked him, "Will the NTSB be using the Incident Command System that we use here in California?" And he was a gruff man, a 30-year-old veteran from the Marine Corps. He scared everybody. And when he spoke, everybody listened, and his response was, "No, we don't use that system. We use the Flintstone method, and we're just going to pound it out." Well, we're happy to say today that since that time, the NTSB has now integrated the Incident Command System into their response plans. And that is all because we pressured them and we made it work. We didn't have a plan. We didn't have an aircraft disaster plan. But we made it work because we were all trained under the Incident Command System. So the county, that is something the county should be very proud of. The 20th anniversary also had several goals in mind, and that was to receive an apology from Alaska Airlines. And Brad Tilden, the CEO, provided that to the families. Brad, at the time, was the Chair of Finance or the Director of Finance for Alaska Airlines. He is now CEO, and he delivered that apology. It was heartfelt, it was meaningful, and it was welcomed by the families who waited 20 years for that apology. But because of the attorneys, they were unable to deliver that apology until just Friday. Alaska Airlines has also empowered the employees to speak up and not be afraid to point out discrepancies at any time during their training or during their maintenance of the airplanes. They wanted to build a culture of safety by allowing employees to speak up. And as you know, this incident was preceded by a whistleblower. So and whistleblowers bear well. So it's really important that companies like Alaska Airlines encourage people to speak up and to enforce the safety procedures. There have been improvements to the National Transportation Safe Family Assistance Plan, which was the plan that we used following the crash. We didn't know this at the time, but this plan was in its infancy. The Family Assistance Plan was in its infancy, and it was, it really gave birth at the Alaska 261 response and recovery. And they did such a wonderful job. One of the takeaways also from Friday was that we can't assume everyone will remember Alaska 261. So the parents teach their children about the crash and what it means and what it meant to their family to suffer that loss and how to bounce back from loss and turn that into something positive. The airlines, Alaska Airlines, does the same thing. They teach new employees and the federal regulators as well. When they meet and come onboard, they teach them about the crash, and they use it as a lesson learned on how to be more diligent and vigilant in their work and in maintaining their airplanes. So I wanted to keep my comments brief, but this was truly a remarkable year, not only because of the progress in aviation safety, but because we recognize the true meaning of us as a society and a community. These families were a club they never wanted to be a part of. Yet, we were here to welcome them back with open arms and acknowledge that we joined, we were joined by this terrible accident to become a loving family group of what otherwise would be strangers. I would like now to share with you this video that we put together to honor the families, and I think it captures beautifully the, what this event means to the families and what it meant to our community and the county and what we mean to them. So if I may ask for the video, please.
Thank you. And Laura, thank David also for that beautiful video. It's the first time I was able to attend or to see it. I do want to say thank you publicly to Rachel Garvin, our administrator of the FAA, for coming along with Sharon Bryson from the NTSB and also Brad Tilden from Alaska. It was an extremely moving event for memory and reflection. And if people don't know, the Alaska Flight 261 was en route to San Francisco and Seattle from Puerto Rico, Mexico. And it's amazing how we are so connected. I had posted about the event, and a fellow supervisor of mine in Seattle messaged and stated how his best friend's parents were on that flight and how amazing Ventura County was and how welcoming to the family to make sure that they are always welcome here. And so I would like to read off this resolution before I come down so that we can remember those. So on February 31, 2020, at 4:22 PM, Alaska Flight 261 crashed into the waters off of Annaquappa Island in Ventura County, resulting in the death of 88 souls. The accident was the largest loss of life in transportation accident in the history of Ventura County. The crash of the Alaska Airlines Flight 261 received an immediate response from the Ventura County first responders, followed by over 75 different federal, state, and local agencies, the military, local nonprofits, and private organizations. Whereas, the families of the victims came together to promote commercial aviation safety by working together with Alaska Airlines, the Federal Aviation Agency, and the National Transportation Safety Board. It is by the work of many that the commercial aviation today is safer by addressing the causes of this accident and working to express their kindness, their compassion, and their giving spirit. It is important to educate the public about this event of historical significance and how members of our community came together and continued to do so to embrace the family members of Alaska 261 in this tragic loss of life. As we gather to remember the 20th anniversary of this tragedy, it is the intention of this Board of Supervisors to remember who has died and always keep our community a welcoming and warming place for Alaska Flight 261 family members to visit, to honor, and remember their loved ones and colleagues killed in January 31, 2000. And that also, it is hereby resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim February 4, 2020, as the day we recognize that the kindness of our community members continue to honor the 88 souls who died on January 31. And we will always urge residents in Ventura County to show this compassion in our daily lives to better the condition of our family members, our work colleagues, and to everyone we encounter in this day. Thank you. Now, I will remember, anyone, please come to the memorial that is there. We go by it all the time. That's also where our beach cleanup is and that we treat our community many different events that are there. And so I just want to say thank you. And please also tell the City Council, thank you so much for their support as well. Many of were there and so forth. So thank you so much. Supervisor Zaragosa?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for sharing. Mayor, you know, thank you for your presentation. I remember that day too, and it was just a catastrophic day. And I just want to thank you for sharing. You know, I've been there many, many times. I didn't, couldn't make it on the 20th anniversary, but I've been there for numerous times, you know, throughout the years. But I just, my sincere condolences, I know it's 20 years, but you never forget. You never forget those, you know, your loved ones. But I want to thank you again for sharing. And Mayor, thank you for the excellent presentation and a great video. That's really inspiring. Thank you so much for sharing this morning.
Supervisor Parks?
I also just want to say thank you, Laura, for your personal account of this. And you just realize how life can be so fleeting and to love your loved ones and let them know. But I'm so sorry for your loss still. I know it must hurt. So and I am also glad that we were able to provide a welcoming way to have this memorial. So our best.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Those are amazing.
We're going to turn around and take a photo. Thank you so much. Have a safe travels.
Thank you so much. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is what moments of inspirations are. Just amazing what our community did to come back, come together and support. It's very, very powerful that Ventura County does such great things. So thank you. I'm going to now go back to the work stuff. Consent calendar? Does anyone have any changes or modifications, anything that needs to be pulled? If not, motion approved, and there's been a second. Please vote. Motion has been approved unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for all the staff's hard work. Next up is public comments. We have three. You will be able to receive three minutes each. The first person will be Dr. Antonio Castro, and the second will be Allison Monahan.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Powers, county staff. Good morning. My name's, is that better? Okay, great. I'm soft-spoken to begin with, so probably need it. I just want to, here for two reasons. One, to thank you for the recognition that you gave Ruben Castro charities during a December meeting. Due to a heavy travel schedule, I wasn't able to attend. But it was, it had a profound effect for our board, and just wanted to share my appreciation. The second reason that I'm here is to bring attention to an opportunity that we have to further promote our mission of ending generational poverty through education, compassionate community engagement. We have an annual 5K on March 7 at 8:00 AM. Anybody who would be interested to attend, the website is community5k.us. And just as a reminder for you and anybody who might be listening, we're 100% volunteer organization. Everything that we do goes back into our programming and for our clients. So we don't have any overhead. It's all about the community. So hence the term community5k.us. So that's all I had to share. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much for coming today, and I wish you luck on your run. I know Ventura County family has tons of runners, so.
Yes, we do.
That'll be great. Allison Monahan, and then next will be Janice Gardner.
Hello, supervisors. Thank you for listening to me. My husband and I live at Oak Haven Mobile Home Park in unincorporated Ojai area under Supervisor Bennett's jurisdiction. We are a senior mobile home park. We are now, we are, according to the ordinance, and I don't have all my information with me at this time, we are the only park there that is not under rent control. We are now receiving 10% rent increases. Now, I am asking the supervisors, especially Mr. Bennett, can, is there some way we can get this on the agenda till you could help us to get some type of rent control? According to the ordinance, the reason we do not have is because our park was built after 1982. And again, I don't have all the information with me, but I am pleading with you to please try to help us.
It is something that's been a concern of all of ours for quite some time, but it is a really complicated issue because of the way the county's done that. So we'll be happy to talk with you. Could you just make sure you, could you stop up at my office and make sure you give them all the contact information for you?
Yes, yes, I can. And believe me, I have contacted many people already.
Sure. Just based on this morning, and we'll reach out to you and try to give you the full explanation.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Yeah, it's, the rent stabilization that we have has just been wonderful for all of the other parks, and it's unfortunate that there's one that doesn't have it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and yes, definitely see staff. Next up is Janice Gardner. That's our last public speaker.
Good morning, Chair Long, supervisors, and CEO Mr. Powers. My name is Janice Gardner, and I'm the Chair of the Behavioral Health Advisory Board. I was appointed to the Mental Health Board in 2012 and have been fortunate to have served the community as an officer, a board member, and as chairperson. Throughout the years, Ventura County has grown, and as such, we have seen an increase in the county's population and with that, new challenges. Some of these were sadly tragic, and others seemed insurmountable. But we are Ventura County strong, and we pull together. Some of the challenges are focused on the population who are mentally ill. I want to thank your board for approving and supporting the Mental Health and Safety Task Force Report, which outlines and addresses many of the safety issues and mental health concerns within the county. We were extremely pleased to have been sent the report from Supervisor Parks prior to the BEHAB General Meeting this month. A great many recommendations outlined in this report were also those of the Ventura County Behavioral Health Advisory Board and the community. It's comforting to know that work has already begun on some of these recommendations, and for that, we are very grateful. A few examples, there is an increased communication about behavioral health services in schools, drafting the process flow for writing of 5150 holds, increased services with same-day access in clinics, working with private entities to try and bring another CRT and CSU to our county. The ICOP system, the ICOP system is scheduled to be updated this year. The goal is to try and incorporate the ability to flag individuals within the system. The sheriff's office is working on a dispatch system for tracking calls involving potential 5150 and 5585 holds for mental health episodes. We are hopeful that there will be more deliverables from these recommendations and how to best serve those in need with mental health challenges. We feel confident that with the collaboration between the county, behavioral health, and particularly our community, consumers, and partners, that with working together, the recommendations in this report will be realized. We very, very much appreciate, I'm wrapping up, your board, CEO Mr. Powers, and county staff in making the recommendations in the Mental Health and Safety Task Force Report a top priority. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Before we go to.
I also just extend my thank you to Janice. She puts in so much of her time and effort. I mean, here we are, the Board of Supervisors, nine in the morning. She's here and off in every board meeting, just really dedicated to being now the Chair of the BEHAB, which she is back again. And I just really appreciate the time that you put in. You obviously have a lot of commitment. This is in your heart, and we just really appreciate how much you put into the job. So thank you. And it's a volunteer job, I might point out, so really appreciate it. And then also, our board did approve the recommendations of the Mental Health and Safety Task Force, and we look to seeing that all 26 of them are implemented. Thank you.
It's also an appropriate time for us to point out the incredible commitment you've made to the mentally ill and serving on the BEHAB board. And it's clearly a patient of Janice's, but it's also been a patient of yours. And it's been remarkable things done for that population and their families as a result of your leadership, also Supervisor Parks along with Janice. So thank you.
Thank you. We will be moving on to the Board of Supervisors' comments, and I'd first like to have a moment of silence. Last week was extremely rough for many of us. We had an officer down that we lost. And it was Officer Nathan Martin, who lives with the Oxonad PD. I'm sure we'll be having some comments in. I'm sure we'll be having some comments in regards to his, his great legacy that he leaves behind, but if we could, just for a couple of seconds, just put him in, his family in our hearts. Thank you. Supervisors, there goes.
Yeah, thank you Madam Chair. I'd like to share that, good morning to everybody, that Monday, the 27th, we had, I attended with all of us, the grand opening of the Permanent Homeless Shelter on Noel Drive. It's just fantastic to see the many people, we had the ribbon cutting there, and it was great celebration after many, many years of helping our homeless. So, I want to thank the County of Ventura, the City of Ventura, Mercy House, and all the volunteers that, that were there. Want to thank Supervisor Bennett, you know, and the Mayor of Ventura for their comments, and, and of course, also Mike Powers, our CEO, and also the City Manager of Ventura. It was just great to see all those homeless, I mean, it's just a wonderful place, I'm not sure when they're going to have another open house for people to see, but I just want to thank, you know, everybody for the, for a great, great grand opening for a permanent homeless shelter for, for people here in Ventura. I also like to share with you that, I'd like to give my sincere condolences to the family of Dr. Manuel Lopez, you know, he was former mayor for the city of Oxnard, and I had the pleasure of working with Dr. Lopez for many, many years, and I was a City Councilman, in fact, I was a Mayor Pro Tem for Dr. Lopez for four years of my tenure with the, with the Oxnard City Council, so he was a standing friend, a mentor, civic leader, and of course, you know, we're going to miss him greatly. And again, I think the, the services are going to be the 13th at Santa Clara at 6:00 PM, and then the mass is going to be the 14th at 10:00 AM at Santa Clara with burial over at Santa Clara Cemetery, and also they're going to have a, some refreshments and so forth at the Oxnard Library afterwards, just for information. And as, as the Chair mentioned too, the Officer Martin, Oxnard PD was, you know, died the other day, and he was a resident of Camarillo, and my sincere condolences to the Oxnard PD and his family. And I have a list of people that I'm going to adjourn with, and I left it in my office, so I'll bring it over later on. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you very much. I too would like to call out the, the opening of the Arch, the Year-Around Homeless Shelter, and just some thanks that I want to make sure go out, and that is, it's pretty remarkable, it was the first city to step up and take the county up on that offer that we made to pay for half of the operating cost and half of the construction cost, but, but it would not have happened had this Board of Supervisors not been willing to make that financial commitment and make it to all of the cities in Ventura County. And I think that's remarkable leadership. I don't know of other counties around the state that are out there making that, that kind of offer. And so, it wouldn't have happened without this Board's leadership, it wouldn't have happened without our talented work by staff, starting with CEO, Mr. Powers, and all of the county staff that have been hammering on this issue for more than a decade in terms of, and we started with the 10-year plan to end homelessness 10 years ago, and that was a very misnamed project that came out of the federal government at, at the time, but we, we took a really important step as a result of that. So, the whole county family, I think, ended up really embracing this project, and it's, I think, highlighted in just one picture, so if you could put up the PowerPoint picture here, and if people could see this. There we go. Those are the socks that were donated, all right, by the county family, right? Many hundreds and hundreds of socks that came in from the donation, and, and they were still coming in and coming into other sites, and we had people on different campuses. VCMC was collecting socks, IT Services collected socks, Still Street collected socks, the Sheriff's Dispatch collected socks, the Sheriff's Civil Division collected socks, and, and they all showed up, and you just have this huge collection, but it's, 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 it may look like a small thing, and certainly in terms of the cost of the shelter and everything, it is a small thing, but it's a representation of how, over and over again, the 8,000 employees of Ventura County feel like this is more than just a paycheck. It's part of a mission that we all are blessed to be a part of, and that day, on the 27th, when we opened that shelter, it just was a great reminder for us that we are part of a remarkable, a remarkable mission out there. So, I wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you. And then I also want to change gears and probably tone completely here, but I, we have in Ventura County, I think, the strongest campaign reform effort that is out there in California. We do have the strictest campaign contribution limit law in the state of California. Every two years, we try to update our ordinance, and we are only a month away from an election, and I think all of us should be concerned that we can't write our laws strong enough to really decrease the influence of big money in our, our local campaign. So, unfortunately, we have an independent expenditure committee that has decided to get active in our Board of Supervisors' election coming up here on March 3rd, and it represented, represents essentially the oil industry's putting up a million dollars for an independent expenditure campaign. And we need to have the fourth estate, the press, do what the press should do, and that is try to make sure the public is clearly informed about where messages are coming from and who is paying for those messages in the elections, and I think we all have a responsibility, if we care, to use our own individual democratic voices to try to make sure people are aware of where big money is trying to influence the message. But when candidates are voluntarily limiting their spending, to have somebody at, to 200, roughly $200,000, to have an independent expenditure committee come in with a million dollars, certainly tips the scales, and it's something we should all be conscious of and, and try to do our share to make sure that, that the public is informed on that. And with that, I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, and thank you very much.
I appreciate you bringing that up Supervisor Bennett, on the independent expenditures, because you're right, the people running do not have any control over what they're doing or how they're spending, and people say they are and they're not. I guess, thank you for talking, talking about that today. Supervisor Huber.
Yes, thank you. My heartfelt wishes and prayers go out to everyone who's been impacted these past two weeks, may your families all find healing. I wanted to start my comments with a birthday greeting. February 6th is former President Ronald Reagan's birthday, and I was able to be with President Reagan twice when he visited a library in Simi Valley. He was a very special man, and sad to see him, his passing, but he was very, very good to this county. Lastly, I was privileged to be honored by the Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce with their Legacy Award, it's been an honor to be a member of such an outstanding organization for 50 years. Thank you to Supervisor Parks and CEO Mike Powers and my wonderful staff for being there, and I'd like to adjourn in memory of the people on the list I've given to the Clerk of the Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Parks.
Congratulations Supervisor Huber, receiving the Legacy Award, not many have ever received it, and congratulations to you for that. Great to be out there in Simi Valley to see you recognized, and thank you Supervisor Bennett, one, for organizing the sock drive. When I was there, there were even more, I think that was the display setup, and what was also really nice was seeing some homeless individuals enjoying the fact that they had the socks there, so that, it's, they definitely are getting connected, and that's wonderful to see. And then also, I share your kind of disappointment with that fourth estate, the media, not covering the supervisor race with that kind of independent expenditure going on. I know when I ran, there was a case where we actually had a press do an investigative report and find a hundred thousand dollar contribution to an attack campaign against me, and, and you know, was able to do enough research to find this individual in the development industry who had done that, but the idea that there's actually no press at all, it to me is really shocking, when you have a million dollar, you know, effort by the oil companies to influence the election and not one word in the press, it's just shocking to me. Onward to other things. MetroLink is offering passengers now Saturday service from Ventura County, and currently you, you can go from Seymour, Moore Park in Simi Valley to Union Station, Monday through Friday, and then starting April 6th, that, there's going to be a six-month program to provide that Saturday service for the rest of the stops on the Ventura County lines. Camarillo, Oxnard, and Ventura will be able to have that weekend service. And then also, was able to go to the Management Council Awards Luncheon, and I know, I'll leave that to Mr. Powers, but it's, it's always inspiring to see the recognition and the great work that is being done by our employees. Sorry to also see the loss of Cy Einstas, I know, a much beloved member of Supervisor District One, and then also Mayor Lopez, sorry to see his loss, but what great contributions the individuals have made to our community. I'm going to ask that we also close in the honor of these two individuals, Robert Buck, Daryl Severs, who are veterans who we've lost recently, and Mr. Severs actually died at the age of 99. He also was a Los Angeles police officer, yes, and with 20 grandchildren. So, he will definitely be remembered, right? And then we are also doing a coat drive at my office up till Valentine's Day, so you can give flowers to your loved one and coats that will end up at the rescue mission, and people started bringing blankets too for the animal shelter, so we're now doing that too. So, get those in by Valentine's Day, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. So, I'll move on to my board comments. I, I do appreciate Supervisor Parks and Supervisor Bennett for bringing up the campaign restrictions. I think our, our restrictions are very good, especially with the 750 per entity, and that volunteering to raise only 210 dollars. And I want to make sure I give a kudos out to Ventura County Clerk Recorder's Office, because you can see all these reports and the transparency on their website. So, there's some allegations, at least from my office, or for me, about independent expenditures, and so I checked last night, and there's none, I have no independent expenditures, and I, you can see everyone who donated to my campaign, and I just want to say thank you. So, just to understand, I, a lot of people don't pay attention to this politics stuff, but the independent expenditures, a candidate has no control over what they do, so it's really unfortunate, and I would think that the politics should stay to the state and the federal, and let us get county work done, but you know, what are you going to do when people do the things they do? So, I just, I really want to say thank you to our board for really pushing the issues here. The Management Council meeting, event that I went to, the lunch, we have such great staff. I mean, there are so many people that didn't get the award but were recognized, and so many that were, I'm sure, were, would be recognized, and they probably told their, their manager, please don't. I just want to say thank you to all your efforts out there, it's extremely important. Second, in the legacy of Supervisor Kathy Long, I've continued with the Oxnard Tattoo Clinic Removal, and I was at the Los Illes Family Medical Office with Dr. Khan, who donates his time, and I saw his little kids, as he's educating them on how to, how the lasers work and the people that are there, and, and David, who's just committed to helping people remove the tattoos, that they, they do 40 hours of work so that they can get these tattoos removed for free with, you know, the dots that they might have, or on the eye, or any type of offensive tattoo that they couldn't get a job. And we even had juveniles there that are 17 with a baby, that maybe made a decision they wanted to not do, and so they, they went and did 40 hours and were able to, to remove the tattoos, and how expensive those are. I'll post something later on, but it was just amazing what's going on, and they're, they're still looking for more doctors to volunteer, and also to make sure that we have funding so that the tattoo removal machines can get recalibrated every time. So, just thank you to the Ventura Medical Center and our hospital, because we're doing great things. And he's, Dr. Khan's also the gentleman that's doing the backpack medicine. I mean, just heartfelt, wonderful things that these doctors do, it's not like you're the Beverly Hills doctor making the kazillion dollars, I mean, there, you could just tell their passion. It was really very awesome to see. Also toured the Vista Real Charter School, many people know these schools in different areas, and how well they help those that are in high school, that, kids that could be dropping out or just having issues with being at their high school, and the, the stories we heard from some of the students was just great about how that school system really helps them. The Blue Ribbon, I always say the Red Ribbon, because back from the school days, the Santa Paula Blue Ribbon Advisory Council, I want to make sure everyone knows, we are having town halls in the Fillmore Active Adult Center on February 5th from 6:00 to 7:30, and also the Santa Paula Community Center, February 18th from 6:00 to 7:30. What we are doing is talking about our wonderful hospital services, also about opportunities in the Santa Clara Valley. This is a consistent message that I've been doing for the last three years in making sure we have the medical services that we need in Santa Clara Valley, and I appreciate the assistance. We are an average, I think it was 15 births for Santa Paula Hospital with the OB being brought back up. We have our lab systems up, our emergency is doing good, you'll be seeing, coming to the board, the CT scan and the mammogram that we need to update, see, I, I put that in there. Just, I'm just going to leave that in to make sure you know as a board that that will be coming for budget issues. I just really appreciate that, because what we, what we talk about is the family, if we're not taking care of our moms, our moms don't bring their families, and so we need to have those services drastically. Were you going to say something?
After you're done.
Okay. So, that's on with that report. Then we also have the homeless count, oh, wait, sorry, the Behavioral Health, MHSA Community Input Meetings have been going on, that's also all our behavioral health, housing, all that, with our Mental Service Act from the federal side. The homeless count 2020, thank you to all our volunteers. I know it's only a point in time, but it's really crucial of where we see the numbers trending, and, and that really helps me, because I attended the CSAC California State Association of Counties Board for their Platinum Leadership Forum, and everyone was sent, Sue Hughes, our, our Governor of Legislation, sent you our letter that we sent to Governor Gavin Newsom, and what the letter is, is we're, we're wanting to join together the counties to communicate a clear and unified message for innovating policy changes required to make substantial, immediate, and sustainable progress to reduce homelessness, and that goes along with this great, the ARC, that was just come up, we have our podcast, our pods that we're doing, there are so many great things, but we really want to make sure that the Governor knows that we are partners with the cities to create good platforms for homeless to get a step up to do what they need to do. And as the Chair of the Urban Counties Caucus, and then on the CSAC Board, I want to make sure you guys know about this, and if you read it and there's something that we're not hitting, please let me know, or Sue Hughes know, so that we can go, we could do everything we need to do. Along with that, we had the Moment of Inspiration for the Alaska Flight Along with that, we had the Moment of Inspiration for the Alaska Flight 261 Memorial. Just love and thoughtfulness to the families. Along with that, my sincere, sincere condolences to Mayor Lopez's family as his passing, and to also say thank you to Selena Zakara. She took his place on the Harbor Commission. She's now the Harbor Commissioner with Dr. Lopez's passing. And so she's always been a continual giver to our community. I would like to say thank you for dedicating even more time for us. And then also to adjourn in memory with Nathan Martin, our Oxnard PD Officer that was killed last week. So it's been a lot of week. Thank you very much, and I adjourn on the memory on this list.
Supervisor Long, I'd say two things if I could add to my comments. One, I mentioned, and I almost led with it, at the homeless shelter, but I'd like to mention it here also so that it's recorded, but Supervisor Kathy Long needed to be called out today because we called her out at the homeless shelter memorial. But she was a very early leader in the efforts on homelessness, and she grabbed the baton and the two of us brought the original motion together to start to split the costs with cities on this. So Supervisor Kathy Long, I hope you get to watch this at some point in time, but you drove one of the big spikes into the construction of that homeless shelter. And then also, I'd like to acknowledge Cy Einstas. I'd like to ask, I'd like to make some special comments about him. Cy Einstas was an early leader in the efforts to try to gather signatures for the SOAR initiatives in Ventura County. And I still remember that back when we were all rookies at trying to gather signatures outside of grocery stores and stuff, we were terrible at it. I mean, we didn't know how to approach people. We didn't, we didn't have any touch at all. And here comes Cy Einstas, and he just was having a ball. He couldn't have had more fun approaching people and gathering signatures. And he would flirt with the women and he would, you know, joke with the men. We used him to train hundreds of volunteers to gather signatures. And what he basically showed us was, you know, this political work doesn't have to be a grind, you know? If you're going to do it, you might as well enjoy it. And as a result, a whole lot of people became better signature gatherers. And I was doing the math recently, but we gathered over 200,000 signatures for SOAR initiatives in Ventura County. And that's all, that's all volunteers going out there and doing that. Cy Einstas is, we call him the grandfather of signature gathering in Ventura County. So we lost a giant in terms of grassroots efforts here in Ventura County to try to have citizens take control of the future of their county. So we'll miss Cy Einstas a lot, and his family was right there with him all the way to the end of his life. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing Supervisor Long on that. That was special. Moving on to our CEO comments, Mr. Powers.
Chairman Long, board members, came with the spirit of family, which echo comments made about Dr. Lopez, former mayor, and just such a wonderful family with his wife, Idrma and their whole family, and just the spirit of warmth and compassion they brought to the whole Oxnard community. Very special. As has been mentioned, we held the Management Council Awards last week, and thank you so much for your board members for being there. It means a lot to us. And just a congratulations to Kristi Madden and the whole board of the Management Council. It takes a lot to put that event on. There's a lot of moving parts and very excited it was sold out this year. I think that says a lot. And I just think it was, it was, you know, I think I'm prepared for it every year, but every year I hear these inspiring stories of our county managers and leaders who go way above and beyond because it is, they care about it. It's not just punching a clock for people. They care about their mission and the people we serve. So it was wonderful. I'm just going to, Kristi's going to come, I know, later and mention some of the awardees and folks recognized, but I do want to mention them here. You can't mention them enough. Best Kept Secret, Jorge Bonilla from GSA. Innovation Award, Tony Shepherd from Public Works. The Integrity Award, Chuck Alvarez from Public Works. The Mentoring Award, Kathy Mulford from Healthcare Agency. The Rising Star, Robert Crawford. Robert Redford? Robert Crawford, GSA. Superior Customer Service, Kelly Aker, CEO's Office. And I have the privilege of being able to give two awards, Good Governments and Champion for Change. And I gave my Good Government Award this year to Rosanna Bati, whom all of you know. And she's just what, in her 30-plus years of great service, also she, I never heard that, I think this is a record, she's been promoted 15 times, right? I mean, I just, what can you say? But she's just, she's what Good Government is all about. And also our Champion for Change, Jeff Pratt, our Public Works Agency Director. And as many of you know who've seen the work that he's done to implement lean six in Public Works, it's extraordinary, and you're going to see it when he comes to your board to present it. It's, it's really impressive the way he ties it into their, just embeds it in their DNA of their everyday operations and their strategic plan in meaningful ways and measures.
I got to say one thing, when I came here 19 years ago, and now you look at Public Works today and where Public Works was 19 years ago, that's a very appropriate award that he's earned. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, hopefully we'll bring Jeff Pratt back maybe next week or the week after because he was really ill the last time we brought him up, you know, so.
Oh, yeah, we're going to make sure he's got time to do it and not have to rush, so, yeah.
He's getting healthier, Supervisor.
Thank you for.
Go ahead.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, I think Supervisor Long mentioned too, a lot of these managers, they didn't want to be recognized, but sometimes we just don't listen to them. Sorry. It's important that we hold them up as the role models that they are. The Arch opening really was special. Thank you to your board for your leadership, as Supervisor Bennett said, it wouldn't happen without it. So many in the county family, we mentioned them at the event, I'm not going to mention them all again, but I do see Barry Zimmerman here who worked with the city, with Barry Fisher, to hammer out the technicalities of that agreement. Scott Powers from our office on the construction site, Bruce Ward of GSA. It's a big deal to convert an office building to a residential building, and not just to do it, but to do it really well. And then the fact that it's connected into a continuum of care and whole person care and a community of services, you know, and really supported by Kristi Madden and Tara Caruth from our office. See all those pieces coming together, that county family you mentioned, it was really beautiful. And it's also a beginning, you know, lots more work to do, but what a great moment to celebrate, a lot of progress.
Tara.
That's what I said, yeah, Tara Caruth, yeah, yeah. And I'm going to mention her again at the end here. Attended Vasita's Business Outlook Conference with many of our county family, also met with Assembly Member Irwin and her staff on a retreat. I've got some good legislative ideas on homelessness and mental health services. For the first time, we did something we'd never done before, but we thought we'd try it, which is we held a meet and greet with the Mexican Consulate, Uclides Del Moral and his staff, and many of our department heads, just, you know, low-key, you know, just two-minute PowerPoint, a little bit of back and forth, but just to get him to meet some of our elected officials, our appointed officials. Supervisor Long was there, Sheriff Ayub. So many of our department heads were there, and I think he really appreciated it. He said he hadn't been sort of welcomed like that. And they're great partners with us, and it couldn't be a better time to partner with them with the Census Count coming up very shortly.
And can we also state that Mexico, their president has stated that the consulate needs to be working with us. There's a demand that they need to work with our counties in this state for the federal count. So I think that's huge because he just did an article on La Vida and so forth, and that we need to share and work together.
And Michael, he's an excellent representative, bilingual too, you know? When I met him, I went and spoke in Spanish, and he says, why come we're speaking Spanish? This is America, English.
Oh, he's a super nice guy. I really look forward to working with him and our whole county family. I wanted to mention too, there's been a lot of great work by Dr. Levin, our Public Health Officer, on sharing with the community the information on the coronavirus, what to be concerned about and maybe what not to be concerned about. Obviously, we should be concerned, but it's just sort of that right level, dialing it in with a lot of the press, as we should be talking about it, but I think he's very reassuring and appreciate that, actually, Baptista PIO also sharing that information, both in the press and on social media. So we make sure the community is connected in real time. This is, some of these things could be off the radar, but one of the things that our fire department and our HR department and risk management's been working on is a return to work program with fire and with the fire department. And I had met with the fire chief for years, and I said, what are your top three issues? Always in the top three was this issue of return to work, you know, getting our injured, brave injured firefighters back to work as soon as possible, if that's possible. And so with the leadership of Catherine Laveau and Chuck Poe from Risk Management and Sean Otten, they came up with a program in partnership with Ventura Ortho, and we had a kickoff on January 24th at their office in Oxnard, and I was honored to be able to attend. I'm telling you, it was impressive. And the union there, Kevin Argüello, was there. It's a great partnership to really do some innovative, we've never done anything like it, and I'm not aware of a county that's done anything like this, to really work with the firefighters as well as the ortho department and physical therapy onsite there to see what we can do to get our brave firefighters back to work and have better lives and outcomes for them and better service for our fire department. So it was a great, great event. Also attended the Green Belt Graduation, January 28th, a lot of the department heads. Again, we're keeping it going in our 11th year, over 1,258 different type of lean six events over the last years. I'll spare you the numbers, but the gist is just great participation by all of our departments, and things are moving forward as always. We had a really good Economic Vitality meeting, and I encourage everyone to attend those. Two great presentations, one is Matter Labs. And if you haven't heard of the Wint Brothers, you're going to, you're going to, these are very innovative IT folks, that doesn't even begin to describe them, but one of the things they're working on with the naval base is a thing called Fathom Works, and what that's about is tech transfer. And they're actually taking some of these great programs and patents and so forth that the naval base has out there and turning them into startups. And it's some pretty cool stuff related to, just examples, you know, super long-lasting batteries, robotics, cybersecurity. And I say it's just the beginning and really excited to work with them. Also, our Workforce Development Board, Rebecca Evans, Melissa Livingston, they're really taking the workforce development in a new direction, breathing a lot more life into that organization. Two more things, there's a lot going on. Held a top offenders meeting with a group of law enforcement. What's that? Well, we heard at our Community Corrections Partnership Meeting from Oxnard Police Chief Scott Whitney, that with some of the changes in the laws, some of the felonies that have been reduced to misdemeanors, there's a lot of folks who are now not serving time in jail or have alcohol and drug addiction issues that would have received those services in jail had they been in jail, but they're not now. So they're reoffending at a pretty alarming rate. And so we got together to just say, is there some way we can work on this with our, like our homeless programs and so forth? So we are working with them on that. One of the things that has come out of that is we're going to try to work with the legislature to develop a sobering center, but more to come on that. And then lastly, the homeless point in town count, as you say, just happened. Want to recognize again Tara Caruth, Jen Harkey from our office, but also 120 county employees who assisted with the homeless count this year. I had the honor of going to a community action in Oxnard and seeing the folks in action. It was really remarkable. I'm just going to list off the different offices that were involved. Of course, from your board offices, everybody was represented, County Council, Human Services, Library, Public Works, Healthcare Agency, including Behavioral Health, Sheriff, IT, GSA, Public Defender, Probation, Human Resources, RMA, probation twice, they really meant it, okay? Of course, our CEO's office, and many of our legislative and federal legislative leaders. So anyway, and we also need to see the one-stop because that was taking place at the same time. We have now seven one-stop, county one-stop locations throughout the county. So anyway, thank you to the whole county family participating in the count, and we're expecting the results sometime in March.
So Madam Chair, Mike didn't give himself credit because he went over to my office in Levi's and work boots and counting the homeless. Good job, Mike. Good job.
Great job, thank you. There's just so many great things going on in our county. And when we all meet, it's like our heads are spinning. There's so many different things that we want to talk about in every department, over 16 departments that, you know, it's just, plus all the others, it's just impressive. So moving on to our regular agenda, we have number 30, which is the approval and authorization of the GSA Director to execute amendment for consulting services. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Long.
Yes.
Members of the board, Mr. Powers and staff. I'm Glenn Infusa, I'm the manager of the GSA Projects Group. I'm here to present item 30 to authorize GSA and approve the consulting services contract with David Elmer Consulting for Task Two, which provides the construction documents for the installation of the two chillers at the pre-trial detention facility by increasing the current contract by $64,890 for a total amount not to exceed $94,390. And authorize GSA to use the existing job order contract with MTM Construction on the chiller water system modernization project for a total not to exceed $1,700,000 at the pre-trial detention facility. Currently, the pre-trial detention facility has two water chillers that provide the cooling for the interior of the facility. These chillers were installed in 1999 and are at the end of their useful life. Recently, the water chiller suffered some failures compromising the facility's cooling system. Some of the failures involve the main bearing and the shaft seals on the centrifugal compressor. Temporarily, temporary emergency repairs were done, but the chiller's reliability is uncertain and it's unpredictable. The facility is operating on only one chiller right now, and that can go at any time. The upgrade of both water chillers will be utilizing high-efficiency variable drives, and the electrical upgrades reduce the 4,160 volts down to 480 volts, and it provides lowering operating and initial purchase costs. There's a four-year payback on the electrical upgrade alone, and with the energy savings, approximately 930,000 kilowatt-hours per year. And with using the EPA calculator, I'm happy to report that the 930,000 kilowatt-hours electricity equates to 658 tons of reduced greenhouse gas. So on that, we're recommending the board to authorize GSA and approve this project using job order contracting with MTM Construction in the amount of $1,700,000, and recommending the board to authorize GSA and approve consulting services with David Elmer Consulting to provide construction documents for the pre-trial detention facility chilled water system modernization. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisors, do you have any questions?
Let's hear it.
Thank you very much for the hard work getting this done. We have a motion and a second. Motion has been approved unanimously. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Next item is our 31, Public Works, Integrated Waste Management Division for Ventura County.
Good morning, Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers. I'm Joe Pope, the Public Works Agency Water and Sanitation Department Director. So the item before you here is a two-fold request for your board. One, authorize payment of $548,554 to the Ventura Regional Sanitation District from the Solid Waste Trust Fund for EZ Fire-related repair costs at the Tierra Rahada landfill, and confirm and determine the county's participation in the Tierra Rahada landfill and future landfill-related activities qualifies plans or programs for integrated waste management for the unincorporated area of the county pursuant to Ventura County Ordinance Code, Section 4775. So just a quick background on this situation here. So as you all know, the EZ Fire began in Simi Valley in October, on October 30th, 2019, and ultimately burned more than 1,800 acres, including land in which the Tierra Rahada landfill is located. It's operated by the county from 1962 until its closure in 1972. The county is a 25% permit holder for the landfill and one of four consortium members sharing equal responsibility for both the landfill's maintenance and regulatory compliance. The other consortium members are the City of Simi Valley, the Ventura Regional Sanitation District, and the Rancho Simi Recreation and Park District. So the EZ Fire created more than $2 million in damage to the landfill, including destruction of the gas collection system and flare system, as well as eliminating all vegetation from the landfill. VRSD has already done approximately $800,000 in repairs to get the initial emergency taken care of. And then there's another $1.4 million in repairs that are needed to ensure that there's slope stability, drainage improvements, and to, the most important part, is ensuring compliance with the federal and state landfill regulations. In total, the fire-related repair costs to each consortium member, including the County of Ventura, is $548,554. It should be noted that both the Board for VRSD and the Simi Valley City Council have already approved their member portion of the total repair cost, while the Board for Rancho Simi Recreation Park District is expected to make its decision this week on February 6th. Should be noted that VRSD has also applied for a FEMA Fire Management Assistance Grant, and this grant could be upwards of approximately, somewhere between $5,000 and $25,000, which would go to the consortium to refund any costs in would go to the consortium to refund any costs incurred. So VRSD is also waiting for the state to determine whether additional funds will be available through the California Disaster Assistance Act. These are for costs related to post-incident permanent repairs. So the proposed funding source for today's item is from the county's Solid Waste Trust Fund. This trust fund, this trust is funded by the Waste Management Fee, which is assessed against residential and commercial haulers based on the gross revenues the haulers earn for solid waste collection services in the unincorporated areas of the county. Ventura County Ordinance, Section 4775 governs the Waste Management Fee and it states that it can be used to pay costs associated with preparing, adopting, implementing, and administering the county's source reduction and recycling element, household hazardous waste element, non-disposal facility element, and such other plans and programs as may be required by the act or by your board for integrated waste management in the unincorporated area. In conclusion, we are requesting your board authorize payment of $548,554 to the Ventura Regional Sanitation District from the Solid Waste Trust Fund for these EZ Fire related repairs of the Tierraata landfill and affirm the use of the trust for this purpose is consistent with the Ventura County Ordinance Code, Section 4775. Subject to discussion and questions, this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions from the supervisors?
I just have a comment, not a question. I think Supervisor Parks has a question. It's just, it's time for us to remember that there are county employees that spend their time working on Waste Management Division, there are county employees that spend their time working with our sewer and those are components that almost everybody takes for granted out there in the public until they don't work. And then it's just really fascinating, I was having this conversation yesterday with Superintendent of Schools, they're going to go do a school bond and the money for the last bond went for all of their sewer systems and all of their disposal systems and all that. And she said, nobody, nobody's giving us any credit for that expenditure and the same thing's happening here. So I just want to compliment, I think our Waste Management Division's done a great job over the years in terms of keeping that issue off the radar screen of the public because you're doing such a good job. And so I certainly support this effort. Thank you.
Supervisor Parks?
Yeah, and my comment is just when we decide to make these huge capital projects like dams, for example, and landfills, I don't know if we actually think way out in the future, not to say, and this could mean that we will be, you know, funding these kind of things way out in the future. I don't know if this was ever envisioned, but it's good to know that we have the fund available to do that and for those kind of contingency things, but it's always good to look at the full cost of projects when we're out there proposing them too.
Great. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I want to thank you for the report, but my understanding is, once we open up a landfill and we use it, we own it forever. So I think people need to understand that we need to fund it and the funding comes from the tipping fees and other costs too. So I want to thank you for an excellent presentation.
Right. And it's really important to get those gas lines and everything fixed. I worked, met with the gentleman who does all that and it's just so imperative because of what's going in the air. We got to make sure that those toxins aren't going out there. So with that, we have a first and a second. Let's vote. Motion is carried unanimously. Thank you so much. All right, we have, that's it for our regular agenda. We have correspondence that we can move on to. 41, it's receive and file. There's been a motion and a second. Any questions? Let's vote. Motion has been approved, well, sorry, motion has been approved unanimously. All right, we have our 10 o'clock is the next item, so we will break until then. We have 10 minutes. Thank you. Part of our closed session. We might be able to squeeze something in. If not, we'll still be back. We can start back then. Hello, welcome. Thank you very much. We were in closed session. There is nothing to report out and we will be moving on to item, our 10 o'clock certain, which is 32, our presentation of the resolution proclaiming the month of February 2020 as National Children's Dental Healthcare Month. This is a great one, I think. So I have Rigo Vargas, our public director, health director. I also have Eric Harrison, our President of United Way of Ventura County. We also have First Five in the room and some other people, so this is exciting. Rigo, if you could take it away.
Yes, great. Good morning, Chair Long, members of the board and CEO Powers. Thank you so much for this resolution that brings much needed attention to dental health issues among children. Dental decay, tooth decay remains the single most chronic health condition affecting children and really also so important because it's preventable, entirely preventable. And so not only is tooth decay affecting children's health, but overall it affects their wellbeing as well and including their school performance. I believe some of those, that information, some of the stats are in the resolution. But, you know, to do this work around such an important public health issue, it takes much more than your public health department. So as usual, we partner with many organizations, many agencies, and you mentioned a couple of them and I'll try to mention several of them that are here today, but we are really proud of the collaborative work that goes on on this topic in this, in this county. Everybody pitches in to try to do the most that we can with regard to providing dental screenings, doing checkups, and then following up those children that have identified tooth decay, trying to link them to actual health provider. And that's what some of the, these outstanding partners behind me are all involved with this and doing. So I'd like to just read off the list just to make sure I don't leave some of the organizations and perhaps after the resolution they could take some, we can get a group picture. So as you mentioned, United Way of Ventura County has been a key partner. In fact, they convened the first collaborative around oral health issues probably more than 10 years ago with the leadership of Eric and also Susan England. But besides United Way, we have very other key active partners. That includes First Five. MYcop has recently taken on oral health issues as a party. They're doing some great advocacy work. Ventura County Office of Ed is also a great partner. Gold Coast Health Plan, Clinicas del Camino Real, their providers are out in the clinics helping us do the screenings. CDR with the referrals and access to youth. Delta Dental is a key partner, so is Sugar Bug Dental and Angel Smiles. So they provide some of the equipment, the supplies, and even the providers when we do these school-based health screenings. We also have our dental health champion, Dr. Marie Beal that's here. You can identify her with her coat there. We appreciate her efforts around this issue. And you also have several county departments and agencies involved along with public health. We have our very own Human Services Agency that's at the table around the oral health collaborative and so are other departments in the healthcare agency at the table, including our own behavioral health. So it's, as you can see, it's such an important issue that there's many partners, many different types of organizations involved with our efforts to provide better dental health to children in Ventura County so that they can thrive not only in their overall wellbeing, but in the school, in their performance. So we again, thank you for this resolution and I would like to at this point ask Eric Harrison, CEO and President of United Way to also share a few comments.
Thank you again, Chair Long, supervisors, Mr. Powers. I had the pleasure of sharing a few of the key results that we had from 2019, which I think really is a testament to the partnership here in Ventura County with the agencies that Rigo mentioned. Last year, the Building Healthy Smiles Initiative provided oral health assistance and Florida varnished to over 2,000 children here in Ventura County and over 2,900 children and parents were engaged in oral health education. Rigo mentioned some of the partners, key partners that were the dental providers, Clinicus, Sugar Bug Dental, Lombard Dental Studio, and Sunny Smiles Dental, and we worked really closely with public health to coordinate and implement the screenings at all the schools. Some of the key school districts that we've been working with have been Ocean View, Huiney, Moore Park, Santa Paula, and Ventura, and they all participated in the program in 2019. And our goal for 2020 is to expand this to other school districts throughout the county. So again, thank you so much for today's proclamation and happy National Children's Dental Health Month.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak?
I think that was planned, but we certainly appreciate them coming out and.
Yes. I just want to say thank you to everyone for this effort. I know with the schools, it's so important and they're also doing the training, yes, exactly, with the sugar. And they have the board with, what's Gatorade have in it? What does orange juice have in it? And really talking about why you need to drink water and what all the lemonade and so forth and how it kind of rots your teeth and the sugars. And when you go into the 7-Eleven or the little mart by your corner and all the candies right in front, so hard to not grab it, or if your kids fuss and you're like, as a parent, you're like, okay, fine, just this one time. But I just really appreciate the education that we're doing and I just wanted to make sure people understand that dental disease, the state of California reported that dental disease is the most common chronic childhood disease and most overlooked in the dental healthcare issue that is preventable and may unnecessarily impact a child's performance in school, speech development, nutrition, and self-esteem. And that the longer, that this is, the future is a longer measure dependent on good health of our families and that we want our children to prosper and thrive and that children cannot learn when they are distracted or in pain for dental problems. And that in recent years, 186 children miss school in California for dental problems. And the school-based oral health screening, the Ventura County Public Health and Building Healthy Smiles Collaborative found seven out of 10, seven in 10 children had preventable tooth decay and 54 needed immediate dental care. And that Ventura County Public Health is collaborating with partners, including dental professionals, healthcare professionals, school staff, and community partners to link students and families to oral health resources. And that Ventura County Public Health and Building Healthy Smiles Collaborative have set a goal to increase the percentage of children who visit a dentist at least once annually by 5% in June 2022. So we're proclaiming the month of February as Children's Dental Health Month and urge all children, citizens, and community organizations to join us in this observation. And I also like to urge our families, I know we always do chocolate and all these sweets for February, but maybe we should enjoy strawberries. Just a thought, you know, something that's more natural and healthy to eat and really try to create those healthy habits at home.
Not dipped in chocolate.
Not dipped in chocolate, but just, you know, we'll go with it, but just if we could all, it'd be wonderful. So let's have everyone come down for a photo.
Supervisor Long, if I could just say that, you know, the healthcare system in this country, we all recognize is completely broken, but if you had to pick one part of the healthcare system that is particularly broken, it is the whole issue of oral dental health and dental hygiene. Given the fact that our young people, it's such a serious problem for them in terms of getting them off on the right foot, I really appreciate the efforts of the United Way and our public health department and everybody that's stepping up and trying to fix probably the most intractable of all the healthcare problems because people somehow don't think about it as a healthcare problem as much as they should. So thank you very much.
Supervisor Parks?
My compliments too, and you also realize how important it is for those children not to have that kind of stigma of having, you know, something wrong with their teeth or the way they look and, but also how this is so preventable and that's why I really appreciate the campaign, not only for your teeth, but your body and your insulin and all those things that sugar does to you. So it's just a, it's a good whole body campaign, but definitely a wonderful thing to be able to do for children. Thank you.
I also like to thank Eric and Rigo and all the volunteers that are here today. You know, I think it was mentioned, you know, the, that dental health is so important for the children, you know, that in fact, I was going to eat this cookies, I'm not going to eat them anymore.
Don't believe them.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm coming down.
Good team.
If we can look that way, come down. That way we could have our board members behind us. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Where we go? Yeah.
Sure, yeah.
I don't know where we go. Come on. All right. If we can have some.
This way over here, this way over here too.
Bring in the teeth and the healthy.
Come on, Susan.
Yes, I like your toothpaste.
Come on, lady.
Come on in, squeeze in if you can. And rotate a little bit. So turn a little, we could squeeze in more.
Yeah, you're fine.
Okay, here we go. Perfect, you're all in. Ready, one, two, three, cheese. Cheese.
Yay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Rigo.
Thank you.
All right.
Take that in.
All right.
Thank you for being here, Jeremy. Appreciate y'all.
All right, our next item is 33. Judge, watch out, the judge is coming down. We need, we need an anthem for Judge Hens. It would be wonderful.
I am the tiger.
Yes.
I'm the tiger.
We put so much in your hands, Judge Hens.
You do good work, Judge. You do good work.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Powers. It's my honor today to present to you the report of investments for the month ending December 31st, 2019, as well as a summary report of investments for the calendar year of 2019. The summary report is something we started doing a year or a year and a half ago, so we'll do it for the calendar year and the fiscal year going forwards, just to give you a sense of an annual progress report. There is good news in this report. We're making a lot of money for the county and the investment pool participants. We continue to exceed all three of our benchmarks, although that basically means that they are suffering as we are with the decline overall in the interest rate market. We find that the pool got larger as predicted. The average daily balance was 2.912 billion and that will remain, that will taper off slightly until April, when I predict it will go up to 3.2 billion. Both, both of those numbers are the highest for several years and the yield, gross yield number is the highest that it has been for many years, actually the highest it's been since I came aboard. The pool was quite a bit smaller in 2011 and so although the yield, percentage yield was higher, the gross dollar yield was significantly lower during that period of time. The annual report suggests a couple of things. First, that our total net earnings for the calendar year of 2019 were over $67 million, which nets out to about $32 or $33 million for the county and the balance to the other pool participants, most significantly the schools. We don't sell. There were 509 purchases and no sales. That's the way we like it. When we define the pool to anybody who asks about it, we describe it as a buy and hold pool and that's the way we want to be. On the other hand, we have bought more short-term investments that mature more quickly. Partly that's because the yield curve for investments in our sectors punishes you for buying something that's longer than six months out in maturity because then the yield drops significantly and it is not until you get to the two-year mark that it is the same yield as you would get on a six-month. investments that mature more quickly. Partly that's because the yield curve for investments in our sectors punishes you for buying something that's longer than six months out in maturity because then the yield drops significantly. And it is not until you get to the two-year mark that it is the same yield as you would get on a six-month investment. So virtually everything we buy now is six months or less, and it will remain so until the yield curve changes. I had been expecting that the intro that the market would force interest rates to rise slightly during this year. I'm no longer confident of that. There are a number of what they call geopolitical concerns that you just can't predict between epidemic ailments and screwball weather and equally screwball elections. You just never know what the future is going to hold anywhere. And, and the interest rate market reflects that. It is flat. And because it's flat now, and the flat level is below the yields that we have received percentage-wise, that means that in the future, our percentage yields will decline. Almost certainly. Most likely to a level eventually of about 1.70 or 1.75 percent. That will, when I submit my budget projections for the next fiscal year, I will predict less money coming to the county than came in fiscal year 2019, 2020. But Mrs. Mand and I will have to work that out in the next couple of months. I am here to respond to any questions.
Supervisor Parks has a question for you.
I have two.
Shoot.
Yes. You explained about kind of get punished on the length of the yield. But looking at the average maturity, I'm seeing that we've changed in the last year from an average days of 150 days to now where it's about 300 days. So we've doubled the length of time. And I'm wondering, what's the strategy on that?
Page.
This is the chart on Exhibit Four, Average Maturity.
Yes, our, on the first paragraph on page three of my report, I described that when the interest rate market started dropping, we bought longer-term maturities. That's the usual way to deal with a declining interest rate market is you buy longer stuff so that you get the higher yield. The problem is that given our investment policy and the guidelines of the Standard and Poor's Rating Service, you can't go long, you can't, you can't get very too long for, for a lengthy period of time without running afoul of those guidelines. And so about halfway through 2019, we got close enough to those, what I call, electric fences, that we decided to move back and start buying things in the six-month or less range. Now, the, the way averages work, we still show a fairly high weighted average days to maturity because of the things that we bought right at the beginning of the declining interest rate market.
It's not recent then? And, and that has some impact on liquidity, right?
Theoretically, yes. But such a high proportion of our pool is in very short-term investments.
Okay.
That would be in one of the exhibits.
Yeah, it just, it was a pretty steep.
That shows were very heavily weighted in terms, especially in terms of dollar amount, to very short-term maturities.
Okay.
The other thing is that we manage our liquidity by keeping the cash in the bank and in overnight availability in Leif and Cal Trust. Those are actually our liquidity investments because we can get those overnight.
Thank you for answering that. And the other question I have is, could you, in the future, provide either my office or the board an accounting of the funds that we have in oil and gas? I'm looking at, for example, you know, we've purchased Chevron, and I just would like to see that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
All right.
I have to be out of the office Thursday and Friday, so would Monday be all right?
No urgency. Just, I'm curious to see you. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve and thank your honor, your staff for excellent work and the investments that you made for, for the county and, and other entities too for that matter. So I want to thank you for the excellent work.
It's an honor.
You have an excellent staff, so I just want to commend you for that.
Yes, thank you. And also, thank you so much for coming to the Commissioner, Insurance Commissioner Laura's event I hosted at the City Hall. It was very important that he heard from you as well. And so, thank you.
Well, I went hoping that I wouldn't be asked any questions.
We're commending you.
Because it's about insurance and not about taxes. But I figured that anytime there's a community involvement thing that's talking about the fires, they may want to talk about taxes too.
That's right. So thank you so much. Okay, so we have a moment and a second.
Did you see a moment?
I'm sorry, a motion, not a moment. I had a moment there. And then we did a motion and a second. And it has been voted unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you and your offices for... I'm going to take another moment. No. We're going to move on to 34, which is the adoption of the amendment to extend the term of 2018-2020 memorandum of agreement to the, with the California Nurses Association and waive the second public hearing.
Thank you, Chair Long, Board Supervisor, CEO Powers, Tabin Kosio from the County Executive Office, Division of Labor Relations. The item before you is for your board to commence a public hearing on the adoption of an amendment to extend the term of the agreement between the County of Ventura and the California Nurses Association, commonly known as CNA, to waive the second hearing, required under the personal rules and regs, and finally to adopt the amendment, the conclusion of today's hearing. The current contract between the county and CNA expired on January 23rd, 2020. And the parties have been bargaining for a successor agreement since November 2019. Our talks have been substantive, fruitful, with exchange of plenty of proposals, but we have not been able to come to an agreement on a successor contract. Therefore, we have agreed to a short extension through March 16th, 2020. The purpose of the extension is to allow us to work within the existing terms in the MOA while we endeavor to reach an agreement on a comprehensive contract. And the two parties are fully committed and with the goal of reaching an agreement by March 16th. That concludes my comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
I will open this for a public comment, a public hearing. Is there any public comments in regards to this public hearing? And seeing no, I'll close the public comments. Are there any comments or questions from the supervisors? Appreciate the efforts, and I'm really glad the two, two groups are coming together to work this out. And thank you for getting this extension, so we can continue the conversations. It's been motioned and second. Best of luck. Please vote. All in favor? It's been unanimous. Thank you. All right. Now we have our time certain 10:30. Our receive and file for the California State of County, Association of Counties Excess Insurance Authority. I believe that Rick Brush is here as well. And Rick is here. Come on down.
Good morning. Chuck Poe, Risk Manager for the county. Let me introduce Rick Brush and step back for a moment. Thank you very much, Chuck. Thank you. Chair Long, Supervisor Long, good to see you again.
Nice to see you.
It's very good to be back here again. Thank you very much for making time on the agenda for this. It's fantastic, truly, to be able to recognize risk managers for doing some great work. My name is Rick Brush. I'm the Chief Member Service Officer for the CSAC EIA. We provide your property, airport, cyber, and watercraft insurance. If you're familiar with the EIA, we provide insurance to 55 of the 58 counties throughout the state. I'm honored to be here today to present the county with an Eagle Award. Eagle is an acronym for exemplary achievement in government leadership and enrichment. The Eagle Awards were created really for three main purposes: to recognize noteworthy innovation and achievement in the field of risk management; to acknowledge and encourage excellence in risk management and in the profession for public entities; and to better inform and enlighten all of our members. The nice thing is, we're in a pace of sharing. The public entity space of risk management is truly fantastic because when one entity does something great, the first thing you want to do is share that with all the rest of the members. And by programs such as this, we're able to do that. Let me tell you a little bit about this program specifically, if I could. Ventura County has received this Eagles Award for their Safety Officer Workers' Compensation Program. Forgive me for reading, but I want to make sure I get this right for you. The county's risk management team worked with their fire district on a pilot program to enhance their workers' compensation program. The fire department provided funding for an additional claims examiner and work to increase their return-to-work program. The fire chief and the county board of supervisors committed to a two-year pilot program whereby the fire district is funding the addition of a senior claims examiner dedicated to the fire program. This has allowed the lowering of the number of indemnity files handled from between 125 to 135, all the way down to 80 and 90. Whenever you get that type of touch points, whenever you have that lower claims that these examiners and that these supervisors have to be working on, you're going to get better service. You're going to get people returned back to work. So this program allows the claims examiners to increase those touch points with the claimants and the healthcare providers, moving issues and the treatments along. In addition to committing the funds for the claims examiner, the fire district has vastly increased its return-to-work efforts, developing meaningful light-duty assignments to accommodate injured workers. The fire district wrote a letter to the physicians advising of the fire district's desire to return its employees back to work and availability of light-duty assignments. The letter is sent by the claims examiners to the physicians that place the employees off work with no work restrictions. So to further their efforts, the fire chief, Anne Catherine, recently met with an orthopedic group that have historically been reluctant to provide work restrictions for those fire personnel. This is really a big thing. The most significant thing, honestly, is, was Chief Mark Lorenzen's statement, Catherine has just made things different. There is a different vibe when you walk through the halls. That's huge, changing the culture. The program has accelerated return to full duty in several cases where physicians were convinced to provide work restrictions that were accommodated. This saves not only the 48-50 expenses incurred on the workers' comp program, but also the overtime expenses incurred by the fire district. So there's savings, savings, savings. And truly, when you do things like this, the employees know that you're looking out for their best interest. You want to keep them safe, and you want to get them back to work. This pilot program between the county and the fire district led to both savings and increased collaboration. Recognition is certainly deserved by the Ventura County Fire Protection Chief, Mark Lorenzen, who's in the audience today, for his commitment of funds, personnel at all levels of the organization, and tolerance in handling complaints from personnel that have been accustomed to these 48-50 benefits. But today mainly I'm here because we want to congratulate Catherine Laveau, Manager of the County of Ventura's Workers' Compensation Disability Management and Disability Retirement Division of Risk Management, for the creation of this program and for the Eagle Award in the category of innovation and implementation of a best practice. Catherine, thank you very much for sharing this with us, so that we can share it with the entire state. Thank you very, thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. And I see that you have an award there. If we could, if we could have everyone come, we'll get a picture. Because I know your guys back home will want one.
Thank you very much.
Hardy congratulations.
I do.
Hardy congratulations to everyone for a job well done.
If I could say one thing real quickly, you are one of two counties in the entire state that have won this twice.
Right.
So congratulations. That's amazing.
Right.
Competition's always a good, a good thing. So I'm looking forward to a three-peat.
Mr. Powers, do you want to make some comments?
They're a competitive group, so I'm sure they'll accept that challenge. But that's good. And it's great work by Catherine and Chuck. And I see the whole risk team here as well. Maybe they can all come down and join in the family photo here.
Yes.
This is, you know, when you innovate, you take risk, ironically. But, but, and that's, that's, that can be, you know, hard to do. But you did it. And you really changed the way this is happening. And it's better for the county, it's better for the firefighters, better for the department. So just hats off. And as I said, this is the program I talked about this morning. It really is, it is amazing. And I'm also amazed, impressed that the fire chief used the word vibe. So very innovative group.
If I could mention, and Mr. Powers kind of let the bag, the bag out of the cat a little, little bit earlier today. But this program has, we're not done with this program. The, the program continues to grow. We continue to find other enhancements. And one of the enhancements started yesterday, and in fact, was used within a couple of hours of its introduction. And if I could just have Catherine brief you very quickly on, on what that is.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board Supervisor, CEO Powers. And it's obviously an honor for me to be here today and to receive this award, not only for myself, but for the department as a whole. We're greatly honored by it. But as Chuck mentioned, yesterday was the kickoff for our partnership with what we're calling Urgent Orthopedic or Urgent Ortho, which is a partnership, it's a pilot program that we've generated with Ventura Orthopedics, who is a very big medical provider throughout the county, along with our fire department, to look at an opportunity to develop a program within workers' compensation that expedites the care that the employees receive with regards to receiving specialized care, in hopes that those expedited opportunities reduce the amount of time people are away from work, that it increases their ability to perform light-duty work while they're moving towards whole rehabilitation post-industrial injury, and that it really means that ultimately they have people who are back working full duty sooner and in a place where their wellness really allows them to then return for what is then extended number of years continuing to do the good work that their department does. So we're very excited about the program. As CEO Powers mentioned this morning, it's a program that certainly Ventura Orthopedics, when we approached them about this partnership, in part, they were a good fit in that they have locations throughout the county. They are very specialized in workers' compensation reporting, which is very regulatory reporting. There's fee schedules and things associated with that that are unique to the process, and they're really versed in that. But the, the program itself, I think, is going to give our folks an opportunity to really be able to get right in and get care through their urgent orthopedic facility. They, in fact, in Oxnard and Simi, have onsite MRI. So we, we already have had an employee who unfortunately was hurt at work, but has already been able to use it and have an MRI within just a few hours of the injury to expedite the process. So I think it's, it's going to be an exciting time for all of us and a great opportunity to see if this is a pilot program that will pay dividends for, for all stakeholders.
And, and thank you so much for just thinking out of the box and really thinking of our employees. The team effort is, just hats off. Great job. If we could possibly, all of the board members and our CEO, and all the staff and everyone included, if we could get a picture with Rick and all, it would be greatly appreciated.
I also just want to say thank you. I remember a couple of years ago, you know, hearing about the difficulty that the employees are having in getting the appointments and being able, and they wanted to get back on the job and realizing the costs to the county. And I really laud our CEO for seeing that this is something we need to put the emphasis and focus on. Delighted that you are able to take it on so fully and see the accomplishments. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see if we can fit you in here. Hey! Always good. I get to see you two weeks in a row. Why don't we stand up here? And then we could, yeah.
Hey, get over here. You have to be in. You're a part of this.
Thank you very much. Oh, you're very welcome.
Of course.
Three-peat.
I know, we need to thank you now.
We're working on it.
Thank you very much. All right. Have a safe journey. Always great to see you. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Want to take a moment and sing yours.
These are some of my favorite days.
Thank you.
A day of celebration. We will now go to thirty-six, which is a receive and file the presentation of the Cloudburst Consulting Group. Wonderful.
Hello? Good morning, Chair Long, Board of Supervisors, and Mr. Powers. For the record, my name is Tracy McCauley with the County Executive Office, and we're here today to request that the board takes three actions. First, to receive and file a presentation by the Cloudburst Group presenting two documents, the first of which is the 2020-2024 Ventura County Regional Consolidated Plan, which is a five-year planning document required by HUD for our HUD Funding Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnerships Program, and Emergency Solutions Grant, as well as the 2020 Ventura County Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice. Following the presentation, we request that you open a public hearing and direct staff to return to you after incorporating public comments in May of 2020 for final approval of the documents. And finally, confirm the purchasing agent's execution of an amendment to the agreement for a contract not to exceed $155,000. Before I turn the presentation over to Susan Walsh from the Cloudburst Group, I want to take a moment to thank all of our partners. This was definitely a collaborative effort, and this is the first year that the county and all ten cities have participated together in one plan. So I just want to thank all of the city staff as well as the city councils for their participation. I want to thank the county's community development team led by Kristi Madden, as well as my colleagues Mary Ann Goriento, Jennifer Harkey, and Tara Caruth. I want to thank Jennifer Butler from the Ventura County Planning Department, all of the county agencies, local nonprofits, housing authorities, and service agencies who provided comment on this plan. And finally, the team at Cloudburst, Chris, Laura, Rob, and Susan, who you're going to meet in just a moment. These documents really represent a great undertaking requiring extensive research and community participation. We really had excellent input from all of our partners during this process. Now I'm going to turn this over to Susan for the presentation.
Susan? Come on down, Susan.
We were trying to figure out where to point it.
I was trying to figure out, yeah. There you go, see top, just press the top.
Okay. All right, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
So, look at these screens and, go ahead and go to the next slide. So as Tracy mentioned, this was a regional effort, sorry. And so this represents the six entitlement communities that receive these community development block grants, in some cases, home investment partnership funds and emergency solutions grants. And so all six of these entitlement communities participated in this regional consolidated plan and analysis of impediments. So again, it was a regional effort, is something that HUD encourages, particularly for urban counties such as this with similar needs and markets. And so I think that was really a great approach for Ventura County to do that.
Susan, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So Port Wynimi, Santa Paula, Fillmore are not a part of this?
No, they are. So they're what's part of the Ventura Urban County entitlement. And so when you see Ventura County on there, that includes those communities that are included in the urban county that receive the funds that the urban county receives. The other five communities receive their own direct entitlement from HUD.
Thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
While we're at that level of discussion, when I look at the different populations of all the different cities in the county, we have one unincorporated area, Oak Park and Thousand Oaks. That's like twice the population of Ojai. You know, it would be equivalent to like one of the city populations, probably third, almost as much as Fillmore. Is it possible to pull them out in future studies to show them too, just because they are, you know, basically a very large urban, you know, or suburban community? Would be interesting to see how they.
Right. That's correct, yes, and it is a wealthier community as well. So yeah, that, sometimes some of the data is presented from the American Community Surveys data, and so sometimes it's not possible to pull out separate information like that, particularly with Oak Park that's, you know, was Oak Park split? I know Westwick Village is split between two counties. I'm not sure, is Oak Park completely in Ventura County?
It's all in Ventura County, and it's about a little over, yeah, I'm thinking about the population, somewhere around 14,000 people live in that one community, their own school district, you know.
Right.
Parks and everything, so.
Yeah, so we can definitely look at that for.
Yeah, in the future, it would be nice because we put out all the cities and look at those, and it would be good to know the statistics for that area too. It has a lot of apartments, surprisingly, too. It's not just all single-family homes. Thank you.
Okay.
And condominiums.
So just to explain this process, the consolidated plan is required every five years. It plans for the funds that are going to be used in the next five years. And it uses the stakeholder and citizen consultation process, along with data analysis, to assess the market, determine needs, and ultimately come up with priorities for funding. This is required for these three programs, as I mentioned, the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program, the home program, and the ESG program. And CDBG, in case you're not familiar, funds a variety of different types of activities, housing rehabilitation, homeownership assistance, different kinds of social services like senior populations, new services, homeless services. It can also fund public facilities like community centers and senior centers, public infrastructure like streets, sidewalks, and parks, and job training, code enforcement, and things like that. The home program is focused just on housing, and so the home program must develop or support housing. It can be for new construction or rehabilitation, it can be for rental or homeownership, and it can be single-family housing or multifamily housing, and it can also be for tenant-based rental assistance. The Emergency Solutions Grant program is just for homeless assistance, either it can be used for shelter operations, it can be used for rapid rehousing, homeless prevention, things like that. And all of these programs must benefit low to moderate income populations. So for the CDBG program, that's below 80% of median income. For the home program, normally below 60% of median for rental and below 80% for homeownership. And then the emergency solution grants for homeless, which are presumed low-income population. The analysis of impediments is also done on at least a five-year basis, normally in conjunction with the five-year consolidated plan. This is a process to identify impediments to fair housing choice and then analyze and strategize ways to overcome the impediments. It's required as part of the affirmatively furthering fair housing requirement that covers all of the CDBG, home, and ESG programs, as well as, you know, with, you know, your department that administers these programs is also working with the planning department on Assembly Bill 686. And so this is an important requirement to look at these impediments and make sure that you are affirmatively furthering fair housing. So the five-year expected funding for Ventura County versus all of the jurisdictions by program, so you can see, this is the total of the five years of funding, and then the regional county-wide allocation. And then from this five-year consolidated plan, there will be five one-year action plans. The action plan for this coming year will be addressed later in the process. This is kind of the beginning of the hearing process where we outline what the goals and priorities were established, and then later will be the more specific information for the upcoming one-year plan. So just to talk about the regional participation, the public, and the public participation is, I just want to commend the county for the really robust process that was used in the public participation, probably the one of the best ever and really one of the best that I've seen. There were six community workshops, which were interactive-type process where residents could come and, in a very tangible way, see how these funds are being used. Resident survey, almost 750 responses, stakeholder surveys, stakeholder meetings, there were six different stakeholder meetings held in each of the entitlement jurisdictions, three focus groups focusing on housing, community services, and homelessness. And then, of course, the two public hearings, this is the first one, and then there'll be a public review and comment, period.
Can I ask a question? For the Ventura County side, where was that workshop held? So you had it in the five different cities, and then Ventura County.
Yeah.
And all the other unincorporated and so forth, so.
Right.
And fit in Santa Paula and Fillmore? I was just wondering where that one was.
It was held in, I think it was held in the city Ventura. Yeah, in the city Ventura.
Okay.
Yeah. It was also widely advertised. And then for people that couldn't attend, of course, there was an online resident survey as well.
Okay. I just want to make sure, I know there's a lot of growth potential, and there's also low economic and so forth in Santa Clara Valley, and I didn't see that in the report as to be focused on, and so I just want to make sure that there's still time for them to get their feedback in. I greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
So the next few slides will show some data that was considered and just an illustration. For example, this shows from 2000 to 2017, the slight population increases in each of the communities. Just Ojai and Port Wynimi were, Ojai was a little bit of a decrease, and Port Wynimi was almost flat, but just gives you an illustration of the population increase. This next slide is very illustrative of the change, what we expect in the next 20 years of the change of the elderly population. So you can see that the population 65 and older is expected to grow quite dramatically, and then the other populations, you know, some going up, some going down. This is showing median income change. The middle column is the median income of 2015. The one to the left was the median household income in 1999 that was adjusted for inflation. So we didn't give you the actual ones, we just adjusted it for inflation to illustrate how the median household income in 15 is actually lower than what, you know, it was in 2090, I mean, in 1999, and the percent decrease is on the right. And in every case, in every community, there was a decrease, although some more than others.
Yep.
So that's very indicative of the issues with income. And then, as you'll see in the next few slides, with the rising rents and homeownership rates, along with these decreases in income, is really making a critical.
Could you repeat what you stated, that it isn't the actual, but it's the, just taking in inflation? Is that what you're saying?
Right. We do have another slide in the report that shows the actual 99 incomes, but this column that we show on here is the 99 median household income that was adjusted for inflation to bring us. Last column. Oh, I see. Thank you. But there is another slide in the entire report that shows all of that. This just shows the homeownership rate versus the rental.
We have one question, Supervisor.
And the other way people talk about it, you say in real dollars, so in other words.
In real dollars.
Comparing real dollar in 2015 with a real dollar in 2019, I mean, 1999.
Thank you for that clarification.
Hi, and then also, I was at a conference last week, and they were talking about who needs housing and what is their affordability, and it was astounding for what a medical assistant versus, you know, what the job is and how much they can afford, and then where they can live. We battle this on the board all the time with housing and transportation and so forth, so please go ahead.
Yeah. And so overall, for the entire county, I think the homeownership rate was around 67% or so. This shows by community the percentages, which is a pretty healthy homeownership rate for the average, but of course, you can see by community, some of the communities have a lower homeownership rate.
It surprises me.
And then this next slide shows the current median housing rates comparing, with a few of the communities comparing to the overall, with the average for United States, and as you can see, much higher in this area than it is for the U.S. average.
Okay.
This next slide shows how median housing rent has increased from 2010 to 2018, and the lines represent different jurisdictions, but they're all basically on the same upward And then this next slide shows homeowner housing value. So it's similar to the last one, except that it's for homeownership costs, and it's also for a period from 1999 to 2019, and you can see the ups and the downs in the housing market.
We have a question, Supervisor Parks?
Oh, could you go back one slide?
Oh, sure.
This one?
So you got Oak Park there, and it is showing that it's got the highest median housing rent. So it's good information here.
Mm-hmm.
You know, when you were talking about the homeownership rate and how it is different among different communities, is a lot of that reflective of the housing type? Because like Port Wynimi showed a very low homeownership rate, but they don't have as many homes, right?
Right. It can be a combination of the stock, the housing stock, and also, of course, the income level and who's able to, you know, and a lot of times, the housing stock was originally homeownership, then it turned into rental later.
In that, I think, I think income has a lot to do with it, too.
Oh, yeah.
It's interesting to see what those factors are, but when I think of Port Wynimi, I just think of a lot of, you know, they have a lot of condos and apartments.
That's right, yeah. But there's a lot of renters there.
A lot of seniors and, yes.
But it would be good to know, kind of like, how much does it reflect the income of the individuals, like you're saying, Supervisor Ericosa? How much is the existing housing stock?
That's right, yeah, a good point.
Right, right. Probably overwhelmingly income, but definitely housing stock is obviously going to be part of that equation.
Mm-hmm.
So this slide shows the percent of population in poverty, under the poverty level, and the darker areas are showing the higher poverty percentage of people under the poverty level. This is another look at the percent of population below the poverty level, but with a graph, a different type of a graph, bar graph, that shows by community. So for example, you can see Fillmore, Santa Paula, quite in Oxnard.
Right, and that's my sensitive little issue of making sure we hear from them as to what they need. So having a meeting in Ventura is really hard to get people from Piru or Fillmore to get to with transportation and so forth, and Santa Paula. I'll stop, but I think my message was heard.
This was just reflective of the five different years of the homeless counts done by the continuum of care point and time count that's done in January of each year, and I understand that you have been seeing a lot of information about this recently.
Yes.
And then the next section talks about the priority needs, goals, and allocations. And so this is just for Ventura Urban County, so we're just talking about your jurisdiction. And the priority level assigned, as you can see, new rental, oops, didn't touch anything. New rental housing, housing support and stability, homeownership opportunities, rehabilitation, preservation of existing housing units, assistance for senior residents are all considered high, also social services is high, and homelessness is high. So these are the areas of, when a priority level is given a high priority, then that's where the focus is going to be on the funding.
Does that information come from a poll or survey?
So actually, these priority needs were all a result of looking at the data and then the stakeholder and the resident communication and input.
Okay.
So again, this is all derived from looking at the data, looking at the participation from stakeholders and residents, and then, you know, of course, the board can change these priorities, well, we'll look at the goals next.
And then this also, I think, would vary based on location.
Based on location. Well, this was actually for the urban county by itself. So some of the participating, the entitlement communities that participate in this regional plan have other priorities, high priorities.
So was there anything about first-time buyers mentioned? I know like in Monterey County, I have a cousin who's a first-time teacher, and she was able to be subsidized a little bit for her loan and so forth, so that she can buy a house because they had such a low demand, a low supply of teachers in the area. And so that really helped their family to get on, stay in. Do we have those types of programs, or is this something else?
Well, this is limited for CDBG and, you know, is 80%, and for home, for homeownership is 80% of median income. Now, of course, there can be teachers that make below that, and so if they're eligible, then it can be considered, but you know, and if they're above that, then there are other programs that are offered by banks, lending institutions, and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
Well, this, this was actually for the urban county by itself. So some of the participating, in the entitlement communities that participate in this regional plan have other priorities, high priorities.
So was there anything about first-time buyers mentioned? I know, like, in Monterey County, I have a cousin who's a first-time teacher. And she was able to be subsidized a little bit for her loan and so forth, so that she can buy a house because they had such a low demand, a low supply of teachers in the area. And so that really helped their family to get on, stay in. Do we have those types of programs or is this something else?
Well, this, this is limited for CDBG and, you know, is 80%, and for home, for homeownership, is 80% of median income. Now, of course, there can be teachers that make below that, and so if they're eligible, then it can be considered. But, you know, and if they're above that, then there, there are other programs that are offered by banks, lending institutions, and so forth.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, now it's not wanting to do anything. Am I doing, oh. Oh, here we go, goals. Well, it did change to goals. Okay, I'll try it, we'll see. Thanks. So it's like, it's like, has its own mind.
It's stuck, probably. Sometimes the button sticks.
Here we go. Okay. So these goals were derived then from those, from those priority needs that were identified as high, then these, there were six goals that were established. You can see these on this slide. I know we're running a little late, so I'm not going to read them all. But these were the six goals that were established. And they can be, you know, written as, there's a lot of flexibility in how they're written, but they can be written broadly. And then, if, as we go to the next slide. And it's, yeah, maybe I should.
There it is. It's a.
Oh, no. Is this the? Motion? Okay. Gosh. Okay. Technical difficulties.
No, you just had that.
Do you want to just?
Yeah.
Yeah, go to the next one, please. So this is showing all the programs, the total allocation for the entire region and for the entire five years. And. Okay, yes. And so this is showing for, for the whole entire regional area and the anticipated five-year funding and by, by those goals. If we go to the next one, that'll be just Ventura County, urban, the urban county. And this shows you the goals on the left-hand side, the percentages of the funds and the amount of funds projected for the next five years.
It's the button. There you go.
It does have a mind of its own. And so you'll see under CDBG, those are the types of things CDBG can fund with home. It can only address the goal number one, create and preserve housing, for emergency solution grant only, number four. But with CDBG, I do want to point out that the goal number four, homeless prevention services, looks like a very small amount, but actually, both goal number one, goal number three, and goal number five all include some funding that addresses homeless populations. So it's not, actually, it's quite a bit more than that that you see that's helping with homeless populations.
Can I ask you a question here, please? Administration of 20% seems higher than administration and other kind of programs. Can you tell?
Sure, yeah.
Talk about that a little bit, please?
Yes, and the CDBG program does have a higher cap on administration, and that's partly because fair housing is included in that, so fair housing activities are part of that cap. And also, you know, there's a lot of overall, our overreaching regulations that apply to the program. And oftentimes, CDBG has even helped to supplement the home program, for example, only has a 10% cap on administration. So some CDBG funds can be used to help with the home program. I know it seems like a lot, but it's actually, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to run the programs without that. Now, it is a cap, so less than that can be used, but you just can't use any more than 20%.
So you're saying the fair housing, the implementation of the fair housing rules or the fair housing.
Right, so the.
Peels, or what is it about the fair housing?
Well, even if you're doing outreach on fair housing, sometimes that can be paid for through the public services, which also has a cap of 15%. But oftentimes, fair housing programs can be spent out of the administrative cap because the 15% public service cap is too limited by other things. Lots of planning, there's planning activities, just like this process, is all paid for out of administration as well. So any kind of planning and then, you know, implementing all of the federal requirements, all the other federal requirements, Davis Bacon, relocation, you know, just all the overreaching, overarching.
When you have time, could you give us a breakdown of the administration cost? Just send it to, send it to our offices. I appreciate it.
Yeah, we can follow up with that.
Great, thank you.
I also just wanted to mention, we do contract with the Housing Rights.
If you could speak into the mic so everyone else can hear you.
Apologies. I just wanted to mention, too, that we do contract with the Housing Rights Center for fair housing services for the county, so that also comes out of that, I believe. Administrative cap, Kristy, is that correct?
Yes.
But we will send you a breakdown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ready to go to the next one? And so you want to, oh, yeah. So Tracy's going to finish up with this, then.
So related to what Susan mentioned about some of the funding for homelessness not really being reflected clearly in the HUD priorities, we just wanted to take the same information and translate it for some of our local priorities. So this is a graph of the CDBG program. We're going to look at the brighter blue portion in the next slide, it's blown up bigger. But for now, just looking at the dark blue portion, about 37% of our anticipated CDBG non-public services funding will go to increased housing supply. About 36% will go to preserve our existing supply of housing, so housing rehab. We've got, let's see, about 3% spent on economic opportunities, 3% on facilities for people experiencing homelessness, and 2% approximately on other public facilities. So we just wanted to provide some context on that. Next slide, if you can, Lori. Thank you. This is the public services portion of the Community Development Block Grant, which is the most competitive portion. It's used for services for vulnerable populations. It's capped at 15% of our allocation annually. Again, just to show you how we anticipate it being spent, about 49%, we think will go toward, to support services for people who are homeless. About 25% for other vulnerable populations, which includes seniors, youth, others. About 18% on homeless prevention activities and 8% on farm workers. Next slide, please. Finally, really briefly, because these are much simpler graphs, the home allocation all goes to support new affordable housing, both for rental and homeownership. Just anecdotally, we do spend quite a bit of this money on housing for people who are experiencing homelessness and transitioning into housing. And then our emergency solution grants funding, at least 40% of it has to be spent on rapid rehousing activities, so we are looking at about 43%. And the rest can go for homeless services and shelter operations for people who are homeless. With that, I just want to thank you, we're both here for questions, if you have any questions before we open the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll be opening up the public hearing. Or, no, there's no public hearing on this. It's just receive and file. But I appreciate you going out to the public. That's where my mind was going. And making sure that, what, it does say? Ah, well, we'll open it up then. Doesn't say it on the, yeah, didn't we? So we'll open the public hearing.
Any cards?
Is there any public that would like to make any comments? All right, and seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Really do appreciate the efforts and really getting the feedback from all of our community and appreciate that. I would agree with Supervisor Bennett in regards to the administration fees. We're always looking to get that as low as possible so that we can really put that money to the good of being out there, at least from my aspect of it. So I do appreciate that. If we could, my screen just went, oh. We have a motion and a second. Are there any further questions? Let's vote. Motion has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item? And this is a public hearing as well? In regard to our agreement to form a Carpinteria Basin GSA. Hello?
Good morning, Chair Long, members of the board, CEO Powers, Glenn Shepard, Public Works Agency, Watership Protection Director. This joint exercise of powers agreement before you today is between the County of Ventura, Carpinteria Valley Water District, and City of Carpinteria, and the Santa Barbara County Water Agency. The purpose is to create the Carpinteria Groundwater Sustainability Agency, or GSA, to manage the Carpinteria Groundwater Basin pursuant to the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act of 2014. And so you may ask, well, why now? As you recall, there was a flurry of activity in 2017 to establish groundwater sustainability agencies, in which those GSA were established pursuant to SIGMA at the time. But what DWR did, the California Department of Water Resources, last year, is they went back in and revalidated the formulas that set up the priorizations of the various basins throughout the state. And one of the, one of the basins that changed was the Carpinteria Basin. The, the, DWR found that the rain, rainwater precipitation recharge wasn't what they had expected, and there was, the, the, the yield of the basin was less than they had anticipated when they did the first study back in 2014. At this, the Carpinteria Basin priority changed from very low to high, which necessitated establishment under SIGMA to go establish a GSA and therefore, pursuant to SIGMA, go ahead and, and prepare a groundwater sustainability plan for this particular basin.
Can I just mention, there was also an assumption of what the future is going to be and why it got changed, too, isn't it?
There were, the assumption going forward was the agricultural production is expected to increase in the Carpinteria Basin.
Thank you.
Yes. The picture on the screen highlights where the basin is in Carpinteria, and the Carpinteria Valley Water District overlies the majority of this particular basin from jurisdiction. But as you can see in the lower right there, that's the portion of the basin that is in Ventura County, and there, there are eight wells that are on, in your county's jurisdiction there, that would be under, under this particular GSA's jurisdiction, should it be established. Three of those wells are domestic, and the expectation is a domestic well would be, quote, de minimis, and therefore, their, their production, annual production would be not subject to SIGMA. There are four agricultural wells and one unknown production well on the Ventura County side. The JPA was written to create a board of directors consisting of five regular and three optional members. The five regular director positions are, would be filled by the Carpinteria Valley Water District. The other agencies, including the County of Ventura, may each choose to appoint an optional director until the adoption of the Groundwater Sustainability Plan, which is due per DWR in 2024. And this is a unilateral opportunity for the county to appoint this director. After the GSA adopts the Groundwater Sustainability Plan, the, your, your action to appoint a director would be subject to approval by the current GSA board in Carpinteria. Approval of this item will authorize and direct execution of the JPA to form the Carpinteria Groundwater Sustainability Agency. Due to limited impact to the County of Ventura and the balance of the GSA board, staff recommends your board not appoint an optional director at this time. I'll also add, just the last two weeks, DWR released Prop 68, Round 3 Grant, prospectus, if you will. It's out for public comment right now. But the Carpinteria Basin and its formation, in this case, the Carpinteria Valley Water District submitted under that grant, and they're expected to get 1.9 million should they form the GSA. So the impetus to form the GSA is there so they can get access to that particular grant.
Okay.
Subject to your questions.
Yeah, you mentioned that will have limited impact to the county or this area, and you mentioned the water wells. But as I also understand, there are some, and the Nature Conservancy has identified critical species, rare and threatened, that rely on the groundwater. And so I just want to make sure that we're cognizant of that, that that's on the record so as we look at moving forward, that that is recognized and accounted for.
Yes, Supervisor Parks, staff will be monitoring, and we generally come to your board in the summer with an overall groundwater sustainability plan update, which will include aspects of staff monitoring what's occurring in the Carpinteria Basin.
And, and so your recommendation is while we have an optional seat, we don't need to fill it?
To appoint to the board at this time, yes.
But will our staff be there?
We will have staff engaged as we monitor all the groundwater sustainability basin and basin activity throughout the county.
Okay. Thank you.
How many boards are you on?
Well, we're all part of. Five, five GSA boards, one GMA board.
I just, I just want to state that Glenn has been doing a great job on the different water board, GSAs that he's on. And I really do appreciate all that you're doing, so thank you.
I think this is a prudent recommendation, given the amount of groundwater sustainability work our staff is already engaged in and the limited influence we could have, given the small impact that it has here in Ventura County. It's, we, we want to pay attention to all of it, but we do have to husband our resources at some point in time. And we're certainly pushing our staff pretty vigorously with, between Fox Canyon and the upper Santa Clara, you know, the Fillmore Basin and all of the groundwater agencies. So I support this recommendation.
And then also.
Move the action.
And then also, I have to open the public hearing first, so I'll open up the public hearing. And is there any public comments? I'll close the public hearing. And also, I want to remind everyone that the GSAs have to work with their neighbors. And so they'll be working with us anyways, with the mound in Huayamas and that you're on. So we'll be very much in, up and running. So I just wanted to make sure people understood that as well. So it's been motion and second. Supervisor Parks, you have something to say?
I agree with the recommendation, and I just want to make sure that we have a full-rounded view of what, what impacts are, it's not just the people.
All right, please vote. Motion has been approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, 38, adoption to establish four classifications and salary ranges of administrative service directors and some others.
Thank you.
Mr. Atton? That's it?
Good morning, Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers. I'm Sean Atton, your Human Resources Director. And today I'm before you to make basically three recommendations. One is to establish a new series of classifications. There's four classifications within the series. And they, the establishment would provide a consistent and clear description of the job duties for departmental representatives who oversee such functions as finance, HR, IT, Six Sigma, and other related administrative functions. So this series of four classifications would, over time, through promotions, vacancies, and reclassifications, replace, we would anticipate, the 16 or so different classifications that are currently being used by departments for such functions. And those have developed over a long period of time, and this effort is trying to make it all consistent. Our second representation, second recommendation is amendment of Exhibit 1 of the Ventura County Management Confidential Clerical and Other Unrepresented Employees Resolution, the management resolution, to add the new series in Exhibit 1 of that classification, which lists all the classifications in the management resolution. Finally, we recommend that your board adopt the ordinance, amending Section 1347 of the Ventura County Code, Ventura County Ordinance Code, to place the classifications of administrative services director three and four levels as in the unclassified service. They would be at will. They're at a level where the scope of duties and responsibilities would want them to be in the unclassified service. The second hearing, this is a public hearing, and then second, we would come back to your board on February 11th, with it thereafter being, becoming effective. With that, I'm available to take any questions that you have.
Okay. Let me open up the public hearing. Are there any public comments? In hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Are there any questions in regards to the supervisors on this item? Seeing none. We have a motion and a second.
Thank you very much.
So we will move for a vote. Thank you for bringing this up to our attention. It's extremely important that we keep on it.
Supervisor Long.
And would you like to read this into?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Ordinance to the Ventura County Ordinance Code, Division 1, Chapter 3, Article 4 of the Civil Service System.
Thank you very much. We've all voted. Motion has been approved unanimously. Thank you for all your hard work. On to 38-9. Memorandum of Understanding for. Onto 38, nine, memorandum of understanding for Specialized Peace Officers Association of Ventura County, and it is a public hearing.
Good morning Chair Long, members of the board, CEO Powers. My name is Sandra Ambreeze and I work for Labor Relations. The item before you is a request to commence a public hearing of an amendment to the memorandum of agreement between the county and the Specialized Peace Officers Association of Ventura County, also known as Bovac. Additionally, we ask that your board waive the second hearing to expedite the amendment of shift work to the MOA. The medical examiner investigators currently work a 40-hour work schedule, Monday through Friday, 7:30 in the morning to 4:30 PM, but are required to be available to respond to investigations 24/7. Medical examiner investigators are non-execent employees who are paid hourly. Thus, they're eligible to receive standby pay while on call and overtime pay for any additional hours that they work. Due to the current MEO work schedule, MEIs currently receive a significant amount of overtime and standby pay. The medical examiner's office is seeking to optimize its service coverage to the community by operating on a 24-hour, seven days per week schedule, which is standard practice in the offices of medical examiners and coroners. Since the current MOA does not provide any differential pay for evening or night shifts, it was necessary for the county to bargain with Spobac. After participating in a total of four bargaining sessions, a tentative agreement was reached on December 20th, 2019, and includes the following: general salary increases of 9% effective upon implementation by the medical examiner's office of shift work, in which the employees are assigned to work evening and/or night shifts, and a 3% effective June 28, 2020; evening shift differential premium payments of seven and one half, seven and a half, and a night shift differential premium payment of 12 and a half. The resulting changes are anticipated to be cost neutral based on the commitment of the MEO to significantly reduce standby and overtime costs by way of the new 24/7 work schedule. The savings realized by restructuring the work schedule will be reallocated to offset the shift differential premium payments and pay increases. I would like to thank the board, Mr. Powers, for their support and guidance in reaching this agreement, as well as Spobac for a positive and constructive round of negotiations. I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you very much, Susan. Sandra, I'll open up the public hearing. And are there any public comments here for the item? Therefore, I'll close the public hearing. Is there any comments from our supervisors, questions? In seeing none, if I can get a motion to approve, it's been motioned and seconded. Thank you very much. I know the negotiations is always one that we have to work on.
If I may, Chair Long?
Yes.
Board, I, I just want to comment on this because this was a tall hill to climb, frankly. And, and a lot of work went into this. A hats off to Dr. Young for leading this process along with Renee Higgins, our Labor Department, Sandra Ambreeze, for helping them get there. It's a lot of moving parts in this. And, and finally to Spobac, took a lot of good union partnership to do it. So all three parties, they're really working well together to get an innovative solution, so great job. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, we all voted. Motion has been approved unanimously. Thank you so much. Yes, Mr. Powers. We will take a five-minute break and we'll be right back. No, but you missed it. You can watch the video later. Okay, we are back and a very exciting item coming up for 11:30. Yeah, no problem. One more minute. Hold on. Gracias. In case anyone is watching, we're waiting. We have an interpreter here who is giving the hearing instruments for those that are, want to listen to this in Spanish or Misteco. Wait one second. All right, we are ready. We have the thumbs up from our interpreter. We have Israel here for our Farm Worker Resources Program. And please go right ahead. I'll pass it along.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Melissa Livingston, Human Service Agency. I really just want to enter, get the team up here, introduce them and let them do the presentation. But first I do want to thank you for allowing us to have this presentation today. And most importantly, I want to thank, thank your board for the fact that you stepped up with your leadership. You saw the need and the value of this program. And you let us go out and explore the opportunity to implement the program and bring back a report to you. And I also want to thank Supervisor Bennett and Supervisor Zaragoza for your initial vision, for you starting the dialogue and you bringing this back to the board to stand up as a viable program to provide to our community. So I want to thank you for that. I want to also thank the Advisory Committee. You appointed an advisory committee of eight members. And I want to recognize Ellen Broca, who is here today. Who is one of the co-chairs. And having watched Ellen as a co-chair, as well as the rest of the members, they work very hard and were very committed to this process to determine first, did we need a program? And if so, what would that program look like? And so I want to thank them for their leadership in helping us take the major tenants that you as a board identified, that you would want to see in this program, and designing it and setting us straight on a path for implementation of that. I also think it's very important to thank Rosa Gonzalez, who was very instrumental in managing the process of the advisory committee, keeping them on task, keeping them focused, helping, assisting them with all the resources they needed to be successful. And then after we received your approval for implementation, to stay close to the program, to support the team, to continue to support the advisory council through the process and your board. A lot of work that Rosa did, and I know you had a lot more on your plate to do, and I really appreciate all the, all the leadership that came from Rosa. And of course, Mr. Powers, not everybody has seen the excitement in his eyes when we talk about the Farm Worker Resource Program. And our team, the confidence that they built, came from your support, from your leadership, from the excitement that you built and their ability to be successful. And so we're very proud of that, of the success of this team. And I want to also recognize, we very much value the fact that the community trusted us. It listened to the voice of the community and said the Human Service Agency is where they wanted this program to reside. We are very proud and honored to have been the agency to house and manage this program and very excited about the team that we built. I also want to thank our Director Barry Zimmerman for his leadership and support of this team. So we built a very small but mighty team. They bring unbelievable passion, commitment to the mission of this program, and talents that we haven't seen across our county, that we don't see across our county like they've brought. They are a wonderful team. I'm looking forward to them presenting to you today, Talia Barrera, Israel Vasquez, and Fatima Peña.
And somebody needs to thank you also, Melissa.
Yes.
For your involvement.
Thank you for your leadership.
Good morning, members of the board, Chair Long, CEO Powers. My name is Talia Barrera with the Human Services Agency, the Farm Worker Resource Program. Thank you for your support. We're very happy to be here this morning. We come before your board to highlight the work of the Farm Worker Resource Program and summarize the report that was provided to your board with the agenda materials. We will share the up-to-date information regarding program implementation, the outreach we have conducted within the past six months, the community events, and the partnerships that we've created within that timeframe, including the much more expected data analysis. I would like to start by sharing with you that the Human Services Agency, and we thank Melissa Livingston and Barry Zimmerman for all their support. They, in order to ensure the success of this program, they hired two employees who are fluent in Spanish, English, and Misteco, something that was at one point very difficult and we, we didn't think that we'd find. Both have extensive knowledge and experience with the agricultural community. They have strong relationships as well with the farmworkers, the growers, community-based organizations, and their leaders in our community. So before we continue, I would like to introduce the team members on a short video.
Hello, my name is Israel Vasquez. I'm an Oxnard native. I grew up in Oxnard. My family are farmworkers. I grew up harvesting strawberry, harvesting in different counties with my parents as migrant workers. Eventually went to Ventura and Oxnard College, then found my passion for agriculture and transferred to Washington State University and studied agricultural biotech. I also have been working with, with my community for a long time. I've been involved with, as a case manager in Rio and also developing the DQ youth group at a Rio school district. But also been involved with the farmworkers in Washington and, and dealing with understanding the labor law, understanding agriculture. And later it became, came back to Oxnard and worked with the Ad Commissioner, where I developed and implemented the first Misteco field worker training program. It later became a liaison for farmworkers, agencies, and growers with the Ad Commissioner. And now I'm here with the Farm Worker Resource Program as the coordinator. And what I love about this, this job is like I get to work with, with my community. I get to help them out and just see the smile and connect everything in the county, the resources, the growers, the agencies, and the workers. It just had this industry flourish.
Hello, my name is Fatima. I'm assistant for the Farm Worker Resource Program. I was working on the fields for over 10 years. I was working with the mushroom farm in Ventura. I also did the strawberry, raspberry. And then, well, I was learning English. Also, I started learning my language, which is the Misteco. I never thought that I will be an interpreter in my native languages. I started working with the Misteco indigenous community organizing project as the interpreter inside the Human Service Agency, where the community members, from Misteco community members come and apply for medical coverage and cowards. And then I moved again, working with my cow, doing a lot of labor rights, talking with the community members, farmworkers, so they can learn what are their labor rights, doing investigation about wage theft. And moved back again to the fields in 2018. I moved, I went back to the fields, working on the raspberry fields. And then I find out about the program, the Farm Worker Resource Program that they were hiring to, to persons. So I decided to apply last minute. Now I'm here. I'm so excited to be here because it's an opportunity to give the voices to our farmworkers in the native language that what it is Misteco. We know that there's a lot of farmworkers that speak Misteco. So that's make it really exciting because I can help them in their own language.
Thank you.
Thank you. As you can see, we do have an amazing team. A lot of people are calling them the dream team because it was so difficult to, to understand how we could have found the talent that we did. So beginning with our slide presentation.
We'll get it up. First, we'll show up first.
And, and we're going to, the dynamic is going to be a little different. We're all going to be speaking and sharing with you the activities and all the outreach events that we've done, including the data analysis. We're all going to be able to share that information with you. Again.
Can I interrupt just a second? When you do that, when you both, make sure you speak into the microphone so that the audio can pick up. Thank you. Yeah. I just wanted to make sure she had her better. Is that better?
So as part of the implementation process and to support your board and the advisory committee recommendations, the Human Services Agency created a direct line, a phone number, an email address, and developed a website for the community to connect directly with program staff. They don't have to go through multiple people. They don't have to deal multiple numbers to be able to get ahold of the staff. And the email goes directly to our team. The program is also available at three different Human Services Agency locations in Oxnard, at Vanguard, Santa Paula, and Fillmore. The hours of operation are from seven, are from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM. We're open two Saturdays a month and also available by appointment. Needless to say, by appointment tends to be a little complicated. However, the staff has been so supportive and so flexible. We've had either Fatima or Israel meeting with farmworkers in Santa Paula on a Sunday afternoon. So that just tells you how they're committed and the flexibility on the schedule. So on July 1st, we finally opened our doors to start offering services to the farmworker community. We had a soft opening because we knew, we knew the sense of urgency to start offering those services. On August 22nd of 2019, finally, the program hosted the launch event at the Human Services Agency in Vanguard. There were approximately 300 people in attendance. We had community members, we had growers, we had farmworkers, we had community-based organizations, county and state agencies, and of course, the media who had a lot of interest on the program. Those media outlets have reported on the launch of the event, where El Latino, Ventura Star, Vida Newspaper, and of course televised on Telemundo, all with very good, positive comments about our program. Thank you. I, I want to talk about, a little bit about the outreach. We design and develop outreach material in different, in different languages and sizes for the farmworkers, for the organizations, and for growers. We print over 20,000. And we shared with you that we had been distributed approximately 12,000 in different events. We met with a lot of different organizations, agencies, just to, so we can start developing this relationship because we know that we serve the same community. As we serve the same community, they starting, we starting receiving referrals for them for issues. It could be like they need resources, or it could be potentially labor issues that they have as a concern. You can see that those are two big community events that we assist to give information. One of them, it was a Dream Fest. It was an amazing event. Over 500 families participate in that event, really well organized. They have haircuts, they have food, they have a lot of information, they have jolly jumpers for the kids. It was really beautiful. I had the opportunity to sit down with the families there and eat with them on the grass because that is really important. We are not just standing up on the table giving information, but also the interaction that we have with them because that it's getting their trust, that they're going to come to us and not see us like it's someone behind the desk helping me. It's just a community member, part of me. So that is really important and we are developing on, on our events and our outreach that we are doing. The other one is the Fruit and Beige Fest. That was the first one that we went. That one was on Waimar Road. And I know that a lot, we have a lot of Misteco community leaving behind that place, which is Cuesta del Mar. And it was a great opportunity for me to understand that Misteco community knows me and they were so excited. Now what are you doing? So I'm here, you know? I was looking for you inside the medical office and I told them, well, I'm back. But now with this program, that I'm going to be able to support you in a different way, but I'm back inside there.
So as we continue our outreach, we started connecting with different, various type of organization. And one of the organization that we partnered and got, were able to meet was CAC. And because of this meeting, we were invited to participate in firmly, which is in And because of this meeting, we were invited to participate in Farm Day, which is an event where with the people from the community, growers get to go around in different farms and kind of learn a little bit about agriculture. So we were invited to participate, and we, and thanks to Good Farm, they allowed us to be in their farm. So on that day, we were able to share a lot of the information about the Farm Worker Resource Program. What is the Farm Worker Resource Program, how they're helping the agriculture community, the farmworkers and the growers, and the resource available to them. So a lot of the, the feedback that I got, a lot of the community members were really excited about it. They, they really didn't believe that there was, there was a program like that helping the both sides, agriculture community, the farmworkers, and the growers, and kind of like explain a little bit about the different culture of agriculture in Ventura County and how kind of interferes from other county. So another, another, because of our outreach and a group meeting, another, one of the other outcomes was that we're invited to do a lot of group meetings. And this group meeting, particular group meeting took, was at 6:00 in the morning. So we understand that agriculture is very different from other type of industry. So it sometimes causes us to be up in 5:00 in the morning, 6:00 in the morning, 7:00 in the morning. So, so we are very flexible and understand the need of the, of the industry. So we met with the supervisors of Good Farm. And one of the unique things that happened was as soon as the community heard us that we're, we're from Ventura County, we spoke Misteco, English, Spanish. One of the, one of the four men came to us like, oh, you speak Misteco. I have a lot of, a lot of the community that speak Misteco. How can we help them? How, can you tell me how, how like, well, we can, and my response was like, we can get together and explain and see how we can work together in better the life of agriculture and the industry and the farmworkers. So we will proceed to the, to the next one. In another partnership that we developed was with Ventura County Public Health, and we're invited to participate in their annual screen health. So this is an event where they're able to screen health for farmworkers. They screen like primarily like for blood pressure, sugar content, cholesterol content. And we were able to share about the Farm Worker Resource Program again. But the unique thing, we were able to speak with one of the HR representative from Santa Rosa Berry Farm. She was very excited about the program, how we both can work together, how we both can like just better the life of farmworker and better the communication from farmworker to growers and to growers to the community.
And speaking of partnerships, we recognize the critical, how critical this program is to the community. So although all the outreach activities that we've conducted have established wonderful collaboration, wonderful partnerships throughout the county. We have done almost 70 meetings with different community-based organizations, state, county agencies. And so the word is getting around of the wonderful work that we're doing. Not only that, we're reaching out the population that is either hard to build trust with, and with the right people and the right resources, we've been able to accomplish those relationships and partnerships. FRP has been able to establish different collaboration and partners within the Human Service Agency, the healthcare agency, and other county organizations and agencies throughout these six months. I can share that FRP partnered with Ventura College to create a certificate of completion training that is going to be offered for supervisors in the ag industry at no cost to them. We started working this back in July, August, and I'm happy to report that in the fall of 2020, this certificate is going to be available to everyone in the community. Another partnership that we're very excited about is with the Ventura County Department of Child Support Services. And thank you, our partners are here. They, they, we've established that relationship, and going forward, once a month, the Child Support Services will be at our Oxnard location at Vanguard, providing information and services and resources, not only for the farmworker community, but for everyone who comes into the building. I'd like to share that we just had their presence last week, and it was very successful. People were seeing that the agency was, was there, and they just came forward with questions and asking for information. I just want to share with you also that we've established a relationship and a partnership with the Area Agency on Aging to provide resources and information for the older population of farmworkers. So just sharing with you all these different partnerships that we've established. We realized there are a lot of older farmworkers needing different resources for meals, for housing, for homelessness, and we've encountered those. We were not making the information up. It's actually homeless and farmworkers, and older farmworkers that came into our doors and wanted to get the services that were available to them. Another partnership that we're also very excited to share with you is with UCLA Labor Center. They're gonna be conducting a research on the indigenous population in our region. Their purpose is to better understand the needs of the farmworker community and other related factors that impact state and county agencies. We're very excited to share that and start promoting that relationship. And because we understand the importance of the 2020 census, FRP is also participating in this initiative to ensure the highest possible levels of census response related to the hard account population within the farmworker community.
Per the recommendation of the, of the board supervisor in our community to develop training and education material for the agriculture industry, we developed customized training material for, for the growers and the community. So in this PowerPoint, you can see a customized training on pesticide. The, the training consists of what are pesticides, how are pesticides used in agriculture, what is the benefit of pesticide in agriculture, and how the different type of pesticides. So it was a very general understanding of pesticide use in the agriculture industry. Due to my background in the agriculture, agriculture and working with the regulation, we all, the growers also came to us, wanting to, us to develop a customized training for their supervisor in a manner that they were able to understand the culture, culturally relevant to them. So with the writer came to us, and we were able to develop a training to their supervisors. And the training was, one was at 7:00 in the morning, and the other was at 3:00 p.m. So we use, implement different type of ways to, for them to understand. We had, we had to do a lot of interactive way for them to keep them awake. Again, this is at 7:00 in the morning, this is at 3:00 in the afternoon. So we, very interactive. So there was about 200 to 230 supervisors. At the end of the training, we also did a survey. Each survey consists from one to five. How, how well did you like the training? How well was informative? So an average was at 4.5. So we got a feedback of, in comments from the, from the farmworkers, from the, from the supervisors. And again, just remind the, the community that these are some, some of the people that aren't able to write or read, but they made like the effort to write, like in their comments, please do the training again. Thanks for reminding us to have, protect our family, to protect ourselves, and to, to help our community.
And the partnerships continue. We're also very flattered and very excited to share with you. The Farm Worker Resource Program in partnership with the U.S. Department of Labor last November hosted the first ever ag roundtable meeting. We had all these different organizations, county and state agencies, and community-based organizations that attended the meeting. We created goals and strategies for 2020 to work in partnership with those agencies. And at the federal level, they were very excited to know and hear about this program. One of the goals that we created, and as a result of that meeting, in collaboration with MYCOP 94.1 Radio Indigenous, we're moving forward with hosting a monthly, one-hour live radio program for the next year, inviting various agencies. The goal is to invite all those agencies that you see listed there, Caloja, DIR, EEOC, and of course, the Council of Mexico and others if they'd like to be involved. MYCOP Radio Indigenous is an FM radio station broadcasting PSA's local events, state and national news, public health information, music, and various topics of interest in the farmworker community. And they broadcast in three different indigenous languages, Misteco, Zapoteco, and Purépecha, at the state level, all throughout California. So we are extremely excited to know that our program is being, it's being listened somewhere as well.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Did you organize that? Are you saying you hosted that meeting?
We, we are hosting the radio show yet. Fatima and Israel are hosting.
The meeting that you just had there with the US?
Oh, I'm sorry. We hosted the meeting. Yes, yes, yes.
Great leadership.
The Farm Worker Resource Program in collaboration with the U.S. Department of Labor. The word is getting out about the program, so they reached out to us. The U.S. Department of Labor reached out to us. They wanted to connect. Everyone wants to start reaching out to the farmworker community and the ag industry as a whole. And so this was an idea that was established back in August on how we can start working together and, and create a meeting and invite stakeholders. And this is probably a short meeting. We have, we are planning to have maybe quarterly meetings at least and invite double the number, more community-based organizations. We know we were missing some.
Great.
And Talia, was that here in Ventura County or where did?
Yes, that was at the America's Job Center of California here in Oxnard.
Oh, good. Okay. Very good.
Just kind of curious, you have the CHP. And could you, what's the connection there?
Sure. We were wondering the same thing. We were going around the table and make, doing introductions. They actually enforce all the farmworker transportation.
Okay.
For the H2A workers.
Thank you.
CHP.
And it's something that we learned on that meeting, which, which is, was really great because we didn't know that there's someone enforcing that for the H2A workers. And they just check if they have seat belts, or if the, the band that use as a transportation is in good condition for the safe of the workers.
Okay. So during the Maria fire, we, as a staff of, respond to the critical need to establish immediate communication with the farmworker community. Work collaboratively with the, with the Cherokee OES and the County Executive Office to leverage the sharing of messaging in Spanish and Misteco on Facebook. This was the first time that our county social media outreach include spoken Misteco language and open the doors to future communications and opportunity. So on the videos, it was over 2,000 views, more than 35 shares in each video in the Misteco and Spanish. We see that the community members, it was well received for them. And because we did the video, a lot of farmworkers started contacting us regarding that 805 and DACA fund because they were thinking, you are giving this. But we were able to connect them with the right organization who was giving this fund for them. So they related, and also this video, Facebook, social media can reach like to entire, the entire world. So I know that I have my brother in Apa Valley, so they saw the video. And they don't believe that county is doing this.
Yeah.
You know, they think because there's a lot of organizations like MYCOP, they do a lot of videos in Misteco, Zapoteco, Purépecha, and they're doing the same thing but as a based community organization, not as a county. So this is really great.
And also, I just wanted to comment, great job. I was in the EOC that Wednesday when the EZ Fire hit. And to be able, Patrick Maynard, thank you. It wasn't, yeah. Patrick Maynard and I were talking about this similar issue, and the PIOs were so excited because the videos were up. Everything was going. It was really a good communication because I think your hits were better, were more than our website for Spanish-speaking. So this type of social media was extremely important, and also with the air quality, so for masks and so forth. I thought that was just a great job. I wanted to just say thank you to everyone who did that.
Yeah. And then you did a great job in the video. I was one of the ones that clicked like and shared, and it was really professional and, and really quickly done. So just great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So of course, we wouldn't be able to leave this slide out. How we align with the county of Ventura, the strategic plan of Ventura County Economic Vitality. This slide shows how the Farm Worker Program is in alignment with a plan for in category A and four items in category B. And these include affordable housing, prioritizing county services to be viewed as assets, promoting growth of ag business, and of course, promoting and pursuing best practice, which at this point, this program is definitely considered a best practice.
And we would like to share some of the success story. One of the example of the stories that we have. A farmworker whose primary language is Misteco used WhatsApp application to contact the FRP program with a concern regarding possible pesticide exposure in the workplace. FRP staff with the farmworker determined that it was a legitimate concern, and we were able to connect with the agriculture commissioner through using, and get, using WhatsApp, we were able to gather all the information needed for the agriculture commission inspector to do their inspection. So WhatsApp was a very instrumental form of communication. A lot of the farmworkers don't, don't, can't write or read, so they use a lot of the voice, voice data, video, video to communicate and send information. And we were able to communicate, and the farmworker was really happy. It's really thankful and impressive that, that the FRP was able to connect with the agriculture commissioner, agriculture commission was able to connect with the, with the farmworkers. So it was really good outcome. And just, just to put it, we were the one, the first one to use the WhatsApp application to communicate with the farmworkers.
We have a lot of success story, but we only gonna share three with you. Another one was that two farmworkers working for the same grower, they had concern that they were not receiving overtime, double time pay, and the required break times. So they contact the FRP staff. We met with them and determined that they were being paid accordingly, and their employer was following the break and mealtime as required by law. So we realized that the farmworkers needed to help understanding how to read their complicated pay stuff and assist them in identify hours pay and deduction shown, shown on their pay stuff. We also shared resources and information that helped them to better understand their labor rights for breaks and meal periods. And one, this story was recently. So a homeless farmworker was meeting with an intake case worker, working to apply for benefits and ask for help to find employment and any other resources available. So the farmworker showed signs of mental health issues, and the case worker connect with us immediately to find resources and support available. That's the same day, we met with the farmworker, shared information and resources regarding employment, housing, and made an appointment to met directly with Logrando Bienestar. The farmworkers now connected to our resources that will help him in the path to self-sufficiency. And also, Logrando Bienestar, because he was a homeless, they make arrangement how they gonna meet and how they gonna offer the transportation. So he didn't have phone number. So I, I give him the resources because outside the, the Human Services Agency, we have people who is giving free cell phones. So I connect him how he can get the cell phones. I asked for the information, and he called me to let me know I have my phone. I just keep, this is my phone number and shared with Logrando Bienestar staff so they can have a better communication with me. So it was amazing.
So we will continue with the data analysis. There are the final two pages in, in the packet that you were given. So the data analysis is the six month of the Farm Worker, of the Farm Worker Resource Program being open. So the, the data is from July 1st, 2019, to January 28th. And we'll start with the case status. So every, every, every phone call, every concern that we give is labeled under cases regardless of the, of the need. So we mainly, in every case, is, is given a number due for confidential purpose. And there, the cases are divided into painting, open, and closed. Currently, as January 28th, 2020, we have 138 cases, 138 closed cases, which mean that the inquiry came in, we reached out to the farmworker and there was a first, second, and third follow-up, and then the case was closed. And we have 25 open, which means there's still, there's some follow-ups to go that we need to do and like, we still need to follow with the farmworkers, see what other needs that they need or other resource that they might need. And we have a 7% pending, which mean that we still, we need to do the follow-up calls to them and make sure that they receive all the resources that they need. And after the first, second, third follow-up, we consider it closed. So they no longer need our services. And if they call up again, we will open them as another case. And also, one of the, one of the main data that we needed to collect was language, like the different type of languages of farmworkers in Ventura County. As you can see in the preferred language, it was divided into the eight different categories, with being, Spanish being the most used, which 106. And also Misteco Spanish, which was 23, which means even though the speakers, the farmworkers speak Spanish, they prefer to communicate in Misteco, their native language. And we also have English, so in the part of the agriculture community that will call more information about the Farmworker Research Program, their main form of communication was in English. We also have English-Spanish, again, those who speak English, but they prefer to communicate in Spanish. And also, we were able to identify other languages, indigenous language in Ventura County, which was Zapoteco, Porepecha. So we had three Zapotec speakers who only primarily former language was Zapoteco. And we also have two Porepechas who mainly primarily the language of communication is Porepecha, which were mainly in Fillmore and Santa Paula. And we have the Zapoteco Spanish, who even though they speak Spanish, they prefer to communicate in Zapoteco. And with this, whenever we have a call from a farmworker who only spoke Porepecha and Zapoteco that we are not able to speak, we were able to communicate with the Misteco Indigenous Community Project to get them a interpreter from their hometown that they able to communicate their concern and be able to be comfortable and explain themselves.
The other information that you will be able to see is the Farm City. So we have a lot of them that are from Oxnard. They are currently working on that, with that grower, that employer located in Oxnard. Then we have Camarillos, Santa Paula. And we also have some that are outside the county. They are Ventura County residents, but they are outside the county and which make it like we can't connect with employer outside the county. But we offer information, resources that are here in the county. And the one that you see as an NA, that's mean that the farmworkers, they only looking for information and they don't want to share with us where the location of work is. So we have different types of inquiry. One is that we have as a 20% resources. That's mean that someone is calling in the information where they can go and ask about childcare or where they can go and ask information about medical calFresh if they don't have time to go to the Human Service Agency and apply there. So it's just connect them with resources, give them information. As a 20%, we have the FRP information. This mean that because it's a new program, people are calling, farmworkers, growers, or employers are calling just to find out information. What is this program about? At the beginning, we have calls saying, are you guys offering money? Are you guys giving house? You know, because it's, for them, it was confusing. New program and it wasn't clear for them. And 22% of labor, this is calls or visits that we have regarding different kind of issues could be workplace harassment, wage, it's workers' compensation, miscommunication, dismissal, and it's not, we have the categories in different, but it's under labor everything. We also have the-
Excuse me, while you're on labor. Can you tell me, how many credible wage theft allegations did you deal with in the six-month period of time?
So the wage, we have the dividing to wage and hours. So it can, it can be from having concern of not being paid or having concern of some question of their pay staff. So currently, as of January 28th, we had eight wage and hours.
And how many of those did you deem credible enough that you needed to get involved and, you know, recommend them to the state or get involved with the mediation with the grower?
As today, we have not like forward any of the wage and hour to the state.
And how many of them were resolved with the grower?
Yeah, so the wage and hours, it's, we classify it wage and hour, right? So they came, I can share one example. It's like someone came, like that story, they came and say they're not, I'm not getting paid the overtime, I'm not getting paid the double time. So it was their concern. So after we reviewed the pay stuff, they wrote everything, like how many hours they worked during the, each week, because they were working for three months there. So they have everything. We compared with the pay stuff. They understand how to read the pay stuff. So at the end, they understand that they were getting paid overtime. They were getting paid the double time. So those kind of situation, it's like we haven't do any referral regarding that. Probably we have, if we have pending something, but we haven't scheduled the meetings. But right now, we don't.
So you've found misunderstandings, those, that kind of thing?
Yes.
And then how about the other kinds of employment, labor issues? Improper dismissals, you know, harassment? How many of those did you have?
I can, I can do a quick breakdown of the labor concern that we have. We have, we divided them into different categories. One of the be retaliation, harassment. As today, we have seven. In one example was, one of the farmworkers came to our office. She had a concern that she was being retaliated against in her work site. We were able to provide her with the information about her right. And she was able to go back to her work and explain to her foreman about like she, that she was informed about her rights and like what, how she should be treated in the HR from that company, took action and now she feels very comfortable at her work site. And then she kept coming back to our office with more information, wanted to learn more and like in the, in trying to, and we're trying to develop more communication with the-
And she's, and she's still employed with that employer?
She's still employed with that.
And everything has improved? Great.
And the other one, we is working compensation. We have three working compensation. We have hostile environment, there's three, three. We have sexual harassment, there's two. We have terminated or dismissal, three. Pays, sick leave, we have two. Family leave, we have one. And there's a miscellaneous category that we have, which is three. On concernativity, there's one. On discrimination, one, and pesticide, one.
I just, on your terminations, what, what, what did you, what was your analysis of the terminations? Were they appropriate, inappropriate?
So one, one of the example was, one of the farmworker was working and he was let go out of, in his work site. He came to our, to our office saying the potential reason that he was terminated was retaliation. We were able to have a meeting with the, with the grower and both sides explain each other. The grower explained why he was terminated and the farmworker explained like why he thought it wasn't a fair. And the outcome wasn't what the, what the farmworker wanted, but he was able, we were able to refer him to another state agency. And even though he did not get what he wanted, he was very happy because he got all the resource that he wanted.
Thank you.
Supervisor, Sarah goes ahead.
Isra, when I met with you the other day, the question I forgot, wanted to mention to you on sexual harassment, number one, and I also about restroom breaks and breaks, that improved quite a bit according to your information you gave me. Is that, or have we had any complaint, any additional complaints on that?
As last, the, one of the current one, pending one that we shared with you, that there's some, there's one, the current case of possible restroom, but it's out of a county. And we also providing with all the information and the farmworker needed and providing with the right community organization, agency for them to seek the information that they need. And that's most of the sexual harassment due to the nature of it. And most of them being women, we have Fatima has been taking on that, just to the sensitivity of the cases. And I will pass it on for her to share.
And I, I just wanted to say, I appreciate so much the mediation of making sure, a lot of times, it's just the misinformation that people have. And so to be able to bring the two parties together to better understand, I really do appreciate that.
Yes. And for the sexual harassment, it was this, it was a woman's who decide and they feel more comfortable speaking with me. We work in collaboration with the organization who did the referral and also the organization also did the step for them that to connect them with the EOC. And that is like giving them the information, how the EOC works. You know, they put the complaint and the process and everything. So I review all that information, they will feel really comfortable. And because of the organization, they already starting a case with them and to file that complaint, they decided to continue with that and as a support, just providing information. And I just want to share with the meetings that we have with growers on some cases and sometimes with the terminated, it's because they didn't have the time to sit down with them and talk to them, what was the reason why was terminated, the job terminated? So this program, it's opened opportunity to sit down and they can ask questions and understand the reasons.
So the communication between the growers and the farmworkers has improved tremendously?
Right.
You've resolved quite a few issues before they even go to the state or to, is that correct?
Yes, yes. And we also, because we speak Misteco, unfortunately, I can't speak Zapoteco, Porepecha for our farmworkers who doesn't speak the language. I was in service as an interpreter during this meeting for a farmworker who feel comfortable speaking Misteco and, and he didn't have the opportunity to do it in his native languages. So it was amazing how he expressed himself.
I think one of the things that you mentioned to me that I think was really important was the fact that if a grower was talking to a Misteco person, and Misteco and the person was concurring, that didn't mean that he agreed, but only that he was actually concurring with the employer because he was talking to them, because he was saying, yes, it's okay.
Yes.
That was, I think, an extremely important information.
And that's why we want to strong this collaboration with growers, employer, that we are here, you know, we have the language. We can support them to facilitate this communication with their employees.
The communication was a key.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's one more slide.
I have two, two more data analysis to go. One of them was time, like the board supervisor and the community recommended the time for our office, our office from 11:00 to 7:00 PM. And the two more predominantly time that we got clients coming to our office was from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM and then to 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. But we also have the from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And we, as you can see, we have AM, AM in the morning to 10:00 in the morning. Sometimes the farmworkers are, have time in the morning, so we able to schedule some appointments for them to come in the morning. And our final data analysis, locations of the office. So as you can see in our data analysis, the main office that we have a lot of farmworker coming is in Oxnard, which 80% follow-up by Santa Paula with 19% and with Fillmore 1%. So we still try, we still doing our outreach or communication of the latest outreach with their, in Fillmore was with, with WhatsApp on the base during their food distribution and we communicate with the farmworkers there too.
Thank you.
And we will, this concludes our presentation and we will take any questions.
Thank you very much. I am opening this to the supervisors. Okay, yes, we do have speakers. I was just giving you guys a, if you want to speak. First public speaker is Iris Hammonds. And then up after is Christina Lopez. You will have three minutes. We appreciate hearing from our community.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Iris Hammonds and I'm the Community Relations Manager with the Department of Child Support Services. And I first just wanted to congratulate Fatima, Israel, and Talia on the wonderful work that they've done with the Farmworkers Program these last six months. They've, you know, done a lot of great work. But as Talia mentioned, we kicked off a partnership last month and a lot of great things have been happening since then. We are really energized about the opportunity to be teaming up with such a great program. And we've had the opportunity to meet with agricult, employers in the agricultural community to help them, educate them about our services and our, our, our mission. We have also been able to share our mission through their radio broadcast program that they also streamed on Facebook Live and they've had a lot of followers, which has opened up the doors for us to build trust with that community. We currently serve about 1,900 participants that are working in the agricultural community. And because of the trust that they've built with this community, we are now able to provide our resources and educate them about how we can help this community. So I just wanted to, again, highlight that they are doing great things. They are collaborating with other county agencies. We are leveraging resources and we're helping each other out here. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Christina Lopez. And if you need an interpreter, you can get extra time.
Hola, buenos dias a todos, tardes. Disculpe.
We will give her, I think it's six minutes so that we can interpret. I'll just use him in which.
The mission of Lideres Campesinas is to strengthen the leadership of farmworker women. So that together can create the bridge to make the social, economic, political change, including human rights. We are grateful for this space and for the attention you've provided to us. So that we can be the voice of the community in Ventura County. Likewise, we congratulate the program. Human resources, the workers in the fields because of the following reasons. Because of their availability of time. The accessible place to the community. Because they have a flexible schedule. Because they're up to date in their cases. And because they are in constant communication with the community. Along with having the language, the communication, the involvement with other agencies. Likewise, we would like to make some recommendations to the program. To create a transformation for our community. And to have safety at the work sites. We would like to have a hotline that is anonymous for grievances. So that we could report lack of training. That should happen at the workplace. That should happen at the workplace. For example. Pesticides, sexual harassment, among others. Be able to ask for meetings with state agencies as well as federal agencies. To be able to implement laws. And collaborate with local agencies. Anonymous complaints. If you became a witness. That is there a way that they could make a complaint? And have it documented as public record. If you're a victim. And you're not ready to file a claim. If they could offer the option of gathering the information and document it. How would you able to support these resources and the workers? And the H2A workers? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Muchas gracias. And next is Elisa Marine Nero.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Elisa and I'm from La Cisla's Family Medical Group. We're a clinic affiliated with the county healthcare and we're located in the south area of Oxnard. The clinic is located in a very area of Oxnard with a lot of needs. And most of our patients are farm workers. So they come and see their doctors. And when they're speaking to the doctors, not only are they there for their healthcare needs, but also they open up to the providers about their other needs. And I can name a few childcare services, lack of mental health services. They need access to food, baby supplies, child support. And so when I, when our team gets a patient, because we have a social services team at the clinic, we identify first of all if they are farm workers. And if they are, then we've been able to refer them over to the farm worker program. And the first time I heard about this program was through social media. And I read it and I was like, oh wow, like I need to get more information on this resource. And then I met them in person over at the Farm Workers Resource Fair. Believe it was sometime like two months ago. And so I connected with Fatima. So every time, most, in some cases, when I have a patient that is a farm worker and they need services, I call Fatima and I say, hey, you know, this is a situation. For example, I have some patients that are spending $300, $200 on childcare. That money can go towards their bills or towards their food or their car payment. So, you know, let's alleviate some of the expenses on this and then childcare. And let's have the Farm Worker Resource Program get you connected with some childcare since you're a farm worker. And, and also for Logrando Bienestar, it was Fatima also that got me connected to the Logrando Bienestar program. And they provide mental health services. So it's, it's nice to know that, you know, this program is available. And I can testify that the work that they're doing is legitimate. And, you know, they are, they, they do an excellent job. They go to the office and they assess the patient right there with me. So yes, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So any other public speakers? In saying then, we'll end the public speaking time. Supervisor Zaragoza, did you want to say something? Oh, hold on one second. Well, go ahead, Mr. Powers.
So Talia has just a few closing comments if that's okay. Information, thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you. Just in, in closing, a few things that I'd like to share. At the recommendation of the Advisory Committee, they didn't want any calls to go unanswered. And that was also a strategy to build partnerships. Because if people call and the call isn't, they, nobody returns their call, they won't call again. So both Fatima and Israel, they were given a cellphone. So they have a, not only do we have a direct line to the Farm Worker Resource Program, but each one has a cellphone with a WhatsApp application. So in addition, all the members of the community, the number is on their card. And everyone's welcome to call them directly, send them messages, et cetera. That talks to the availability that we have and the accessibility for the farm worker. And again, in closing, I really want to thank the Board of Supervisors, CEO Powers, Barry Zimmerman, Melissa Livingston, and of course, the members of the community, everyone who's here, Mike Op and our partners for all their support. It's been an amazing six months. And we're just very thankful, very grateful for the opportunity and for all the support we've received. Thank you.
Can you please state why you're using the WhatsApp app? I know, but I want other people to understand why it's such a unique communication tool.
So being part of the community, we have identified that WhatsApp is the main predominant tool of communication. Not only because it's both iOS and Android are available to use it. And it, it works, it's very easy to set up. You just need a phone number and download the application, you got an account. And also for the, for those who don't speak, don't speak English or Spanish or can't write, the audio is very good for them. So they, they can leave message. A lot of the farm workers that I talk to is mainly on messages through audio. So they will leave me an audio, they will say, Israel, can we call, have a question? What time can I call you? And a lot of it's in audio. They will send me like text message and it's better for them in form of communication.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yeah, I'm, Talia.
And we would also like to thank Lidera Campesina for their constant support of the program and for always working with them.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I, I had homeless and notes that I was going to share with the, with the public, but you said it so well. I mean, I'm, I just got to say thank you. No, but I, I really want to thank, thank you. And I want to thank Rosa from the CEO's office for, for helping out. And HSA, you know, we have Barry Zimmerman and Melissa, the Farm Worker Advisory Board, Broca is here. And the growers especially, the growers and the farm workers. Because when we started this back and Supervisor Bennett and myself in 2017, I remember having a group of workers on this side and the growers on the other side. And then we had all the different agencies from the state here and the feds. But I can see really what you have done here in the last few months, just fantastic. Because the growers, I think, I believe they're probably happier now that we communicated with them also the growers. But I just want to thank the growers and the Act Commissioner for working with us. But in, in just a short time, that you mentioned the work that you've done. We had a tremendous, tremendous feedback from that, which is really, really great. And when I visited your office the other day, I was really impressed the way you work with the people, what you have done. And I believe that this is extremely important because people trust you. And, and it's, when you go over to your office, it's warm, it's a warm office, it's not a bureaucratic office. And I think it's really important. So I'd like to commend Talia, you know, the coordinator, administrative coordinator for the work that you've done. Israel, the coordinator for outstanding work, you know, the trilingual work that you do is just unbelievable. And also, of course, Fatima, you know, which is, as we just heard, you know, how the communication she has with the, with the community is really great. And I believe when you go out there that, that the connection you have with the people is really strong because you believe in what you're doing. You believe that you're going to help the people, you're going to help the Misteco community, the Spanish community, the English community. So you're there for everybody, which I think is extremely important. And they trust you, which I think is extremely important. And one of the things that Talia mentioned to me is that you now started working with the state. In fact, they like the program so much, and you mentioned it here in your program, that they kind of want to model it for other counties, which I think is really important. So that's really kudos to us, you know, and to the county of Ventura. So, go ahead.
Actually, we're very flattered because it's the U.S. Department of Labor. So we're at the federal level who want, they want to start replicating this effort.
It's the federal level.
At the national level.
Yes.
So the national level, so this is even better. So this is really fantastic. So what I'd like to do, you know, we have the MAC, our Municipal Advisory Council here in El Rio Nilo Acres. Want to invite you over to, to speak to our community because we have a lot of multitude of farm workers that are in the Misteco. And, and I think that would really, really, would give them some good information. And I believe that they would really learn a lot from, from the program that we have going. So, so I, I think that this is great. I believe, you know, that what we started here has really worked tremendously to the benefit. Again, when I mentioned to the growers and the workers. I remember when we first started, they were talking about sexual harassment, they're talking about lost wages. They were talking about they couldn't go to the bathroom, there was no breaks. And, and, and I think there was a lot of misunderstanding also. I'm sure that some of those things happen, but now, but having the resources that they go out there and talk to you folks. And then you can talk to the growers and, and work with, with all of them. So I commend you. Excellent, excellent presentation. And thank you so much for your good work.
Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you very much. My first question is, I really appreciate the ladies coming and that spoke. And their very specific request, and your request about doing anonymous, can you make anonymous contact, you know, anonymous hotline? So my question is, can we and do we think we should accept anonymous allegations?
So per the recommendation of the board in the community, that if the farm worker just wants to be anonymous, they are, they could be anonymous. But we also do understand that some agencies, due to the nature of some of the investigation, might not be able to keep all, all the anonymity, all the name anonymous.
But the initial contact in is what they're asking for, can be done anonymous.
Yes, and the initial contact can be anonymous.
And then their second request was, can you investigate if it's a victim who doesn't want to go public yet? Can you investigate enough to preserve the record? That's a trickier question, I think.
Yes, because we are the Farm Worker Resource Program, we don't do, we don't do a fourth.
Do a designation.
But what we do, we collect all the data, all the information needed and provide it with them.
I'm sorry, just to add to the response from the team here, Rosa Gonzalez, County Executive Office. It does get very tricky when we use the word victim and the situation that's happening because there could be a situation where the Farm Worker Program has to deal with criminal activity or something and the obligation to possibly report that information. So that is a discussion that we all actually have had in sensitivity and the approach to the various topics and issues that they could face. In addition to part of their training and preparation for the program itself, they met with, again, with not only all the available resources, but also connected with local law enforcement, such as our sheriff's department. And have that direct line also to kind of just have the communication if needed, in a sense, to maybe gather information to relate to the potential person that could be a victim. Just to kind of also help them come forward or how they could help them kind of ease those nerves about possible issues. Either it be immigration or family issues, so that that way we all kind of really have thought this out thoroughly.
So if we could, number one, and the answer to the questions, yes, they could call Farm Worker Resource Program and make an anonymous contact. So if that is communicated to those women. But if you'll communicate with those women back there about the second half of the request, which is a much more complicated one about what your limitations are, et cetera. So good, I'm glad we were able to get that done. If you would have asked me when we launched this program, that there's going to be a WhatsApp out there that people who don't write and stuff could make a voice thing, I, I would have went, what? I would have said, what's what app? You know, I mean, it's, so I just want to compliment you. You've really got, you know, you really hit the, hit the ground running, lots of, you know, 70 meetings and all of that. The trick is to keep it going now, right? There's a lot of early energy, a lot of things happen, a lot of people want to help, a lot of people are curious. All that curiosity is going to go down. Some of those people that originally wanted to help won't be there. You guys are going to get tired, but, but you have a real responsibility.
They're young, they can go.
Yeah, you've got a real responsibility to keep this thing going. We, I believe this is, if we looked at the options, if you remember, there are a lot of options. Where could we go with this, you know? Was this going to be a completely just wage theft focused, you know, labor relations thing? Was it, was it going to be something else over here? I, I think, I don't, I, I, there may be something better than this that we could have come up with. But this certainly is something that I think is a huge improvement for all the stakeholders involved. I think that farm workers have some resources made really clear. But I think growers now have a, a place where data is collected and we, and so allegations of massive, you know, problems are, you know, are not surfacing. And it's, because our, it fits our goal, which is to say, and we remind everybody, why, why are we doing this? We're doing this as county government because we want to have farm workers have good lives. And we want farm workers to want to be farm workers in Ventura County because that's good for Ventura County agriculture. And we want this to be the premier place for a farm worker to decide to be a farm worker. That's a major focus that we have of this. And certainly, it seems like farm workers feel better now than they, than, than they did before that. So a great first step, and I hope that people that were skeptical about it might say it's not doing everything that they want. Fact is, I'm sure, all of your stakeholders are coming and telling you, you're not doing it exactly like they want you to, right? And, but all of those stakeholders are better off than they were before. We're, to, 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 to you, Fatima, and Israel in particular, and Talia with your, your, your help from, from the county government side, we are really fortunate that you've come on board. And on behalf of all of us and all the people you're touching, thank you for, it's, it's just your genuine commitment to doing the job right. But what I want to say also is, you're really fortunate to get to do this work. There are not very many people that, whose job it is to just go out and help other people. You know, just with the broad scope that you have, you know? I mean, some people, a pharmacist helps people all day long, but they're doing pills all day long. You have this wonderful opportunity. And you also have this wonderful opportunity to make this first in the state program, a program that ends up becoming the envy of every place else. And everybody else says, we got to do that. We have to have that kind of program if we have a significant farm worker presence. But for that to happen, you've got to really keep up the high energy that you have. You have to keep up the ethical behavior. You have to keep this program, really the, the kind of program that you've kicked it off to be in, in the first six months. And we're fortunate to have an advisory board that, that has come together, truly representing two camps that were not able to communicate so well. But we had some, some enlightened growers that kept hanging in there and, and wanting to do that. And we have Ellen Broca in here representing some of those other growers from Ryder and some of those others. And we had farm workers from, and we had cause and we had the leadership there. And those people meshed together enough to get us to the point where we actually had a real program where you could meet in the middle and, and have these conversations. So we're fortunate to have this, we're fortunate to have the advisory committee. We're fortunate to have a Board of Supervisors and supportive of it and a CEO's office all the way down to, to, to make this happen. The, I, I wanted to emphasize that it's new and it can be shaped. And you have a real responsibility. You're the closest, you're the ones doing it every day. You should be constantly thinking about where should this go in the future? So it stays as productive and as efficient a way as possible for us to serve the farm workers out there and, and by extension, everybody in Ventura County that benefits from agriculture being here, right? And then the final thing I, I want to say is that we establish lots of committees here in county government. And a lot of times politicians get a rap for, if you don't want to do anything, form a committee, right? And, and you get, but we've had lots of committees. And Supervisor Foy was, you know, was oftentimes trying to say, we've got to decrease these committees and all, all of that kind of stuff. The role of a committee is, is really important in, 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 in all of these situations. And I just want to emphasize a few things because I want this to be successful. I want to remind the committee of I want to remind the committee of the pitfalls that some committees fall into. This is an advisory committee that was set up to sort of give advice about how to get this thing going. It was just, it was, it was like the, the field was this big and you kind of had to help bring it down and have everybody go, there's some consensus to get here. Now this thing has been launched and, and, um, the, uh, the, one of the things that can happen is, an advisory committee can start to feel like they're the management committee, right? And the advisory committee, I think now, plays the role of oversight, be there, see what's going on. But now they are advisory to the Board of Supervisors. It is the CEO's office that manages the Farm Worker Resource Program. And the advisory committee has to recognize that distinction. And if they do, we, we think things stay as a healthy relationship. But I've seen committees just fall apart because some, um, some people take the advisory role and, and, and turn it into a management role. Uh, they, or, or, or they, you know, they demand it has to be run their particular way. And I, I don't think that, uh, and you have to be truly only working for all of the residents of Ventura County through the CEO's office, specifically focused on the farmworkers and what's best for them. And you're gonna get pushed and pulled, but you have to just keep your eye on, on, on that, that ball there. And with that, I, 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 with that, that's, that, I, I offer that not as a, as a criticism. We have a great advisory committee, but as a hope that, that we can keep all of this really in the positive realm that it's really kicked off. So thank you very much.
I'm not sure, I'd just like to add a little bit to that. You know, I know that the advisory board has done an excellent job. And I'm not sure how often they meet now, but potentially maybe they can meet as needed, you know? Because I think now they will have the dream team, you guys are the dream team, that I, uh, I believe that maybe the advisory board might meet as needed, not have to meet, uh, I'm not sure how often they meet now, monthly or bi-monthly. But I, I don't believe that the advisory board should, has to meet that many times. Maybe once a year, maybe as needed, maybe, I'm not sure, you know? But maybe that's something that we need to look at. So.
Supervisor Parks?
Well, I just want to congratulate Supervisor Zaragoza and Supervisor Bennett for bringing this forward. It was a, a tough decision for the board. Um, my thought was that, um, the government doing that may not have the trust of the farmworkers. So I think the fact that you've got the partnerships at the table has really made that trust happen. And really want to encourage that we keep that and thank everybody that is partnering to see this. And we're seeing an effect, you know? Uh, just that one description about someone thought that they weren't getting their overtime, or a couple. And they must be seething, you know, that I've been denied this. And then when they look and explain the paycheck, they understood that they weren't getting burned. And that kind of thing can really help relationships. And, um, that, that one there obviously was a positive outcome. And I love, again, when you're talking about the partners, that you've even got the national attention now. It is a, a one of a kind and maybe it will be duplicated elsewhere where it's also needed. And just I love the idea that, that you are a role model. And, um, just appreciate everyone's willingness. And, uh, and it is successful. It's something you guys should be very proud that you pushed forward. The CEO's office taking this under their belt. And really getting, you know, some really quality staff, as well as we've got some great quality partners. So I think that helps a lot too. So thank you, everyone, from Rosa to Farm Bureau, to these great staff people, to Lidris.
Supervisor Parks, if, if I could just say, just, just imagine if that one worker went out and started talking about that, what they thought was wage theft.
That's right.
And what that can do to the reputation, uh, and it was a misunderstanding. And, and, and that's why we were constantly saying, you know, we, we wanted, we wanted the data. So just, I mean, putting a negative back in the can is a whole lot harder than, than, than stopping it before it gets out there and having them have a place to take it. So.
Right. And Supervisor Zaragoza?
Well, just one quick thing. I know a lot of the misunderstandings too at the time was that the grower hired a contractor. And the contractor then hired the, the individuals. And if the grower was mistreating the, uh, I'm screaming, the contract was mistreating the, the workers, then the grower would take the blame. So I think that probably maybe we understand now that the contractor was working for the grower and really the grower was not responsible, but the contractor was the one that was really abusing the people. So that interaction, I, I think we can take care of now. Or you've worked on that now too, to solve that issue too.
And thank you. I was going to say that as well. It's the environment here for ag industry with our growers, with our farmworkers. It's been repeated to us many times that we're 25% low on farmworkers. And we know that it's community. We know it's trust. We know that we have to break bread and understand the situations so that we can keep people here and working here. And they tell their friends, hey, this environment is good. Uh, come work here, your family will grow better here. We're a government that is here for the safety net of the community. And that is so important. This is the safety net of our farmworkers. And I really appreciate, uh, being there with you at the consulate and speaking with him. Uh, the consulate has a 211 at their location in case people need it. Going out, I know for my district, I appreciate all that you're doing because I, we're not hearing the calls we used to get. And when we don't hear the calls, we know that this is a good thing. We've gone out into the communities and asked and, and it's good. We're hearing really good things about what you're doing and that trust is huge. Um, bringing in child welfare or first five, uh, those type of programs and the medical, I think are really good because not everyone who's come here for farmworking knows what's available. And they also don't know what to trust. But if farmworkers and the, the consultants and the employers can work together and if you're the mediator, applaud this program. Great, great. And I love that the USDA is looking at this because they know how valuable our ag industry is here. They know how valuable our farmworkers are. And the H. 2A, 2A program, making sure that they get there safe, that they have housing. All those issues are extremely important to the economy of here, the, the life. You know, they're our neighbors. Um, so I just want to say thank you very much because it doesn't, initially to me, I might not have understood how robust this program could be. But in talking with everything, it's just been invaluable, I believe. And I just want to say thank you. I know Farm Bureau, John Crist is here. Um, and we've got the ag industries that is, I've talked to, and I just want to say thank you. I know our room used to be really full on these type of situations and they're not, which is a fabulous sign. It means that you are doing something right. And I just want to say this is good government. So thank you. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Chair Longwell. It's all been so well said. And again, thank you to Supervisors Bennett and Zaragoza for having the vision to, to get us here to this point. But, you know, when I think of this, I just think, you know, trust is everything. Come to be in this total. And when this started, there was fears on, on a lot of sides, understandable, very reasonable fears. But, but people came together in a lot of different ways. You had John from, from the Farm Bureau making appointments, my cop making appointments. Uh, and we learned a lot, you know, but sometimes there were also things we already knew. You know, we have excellent growers in this county who care deeply about their employees, about their farmworkers. We have farmworkers who are honest, hardworking people, who care about the growers that they're working with. And so, uh, and I think that really rose up and you have to build trust and, and you've built it and it's beautiful. And I love that the board had eight commissioners. You think, oh, well, how are you gonna get anything done with an even number? That's because they all have to work together. And they did, you know, Ellen and Lucas and the whole team. And, and that's beautiful. And I used to think too, that we had two unicorns because we hired two trilingual people with experience in, uh, in agriculture and so forth. But we really have three because it's Talia, what you bring to the program, you, you really function as a unit. And we need all of you to do this work and build this trust. And what the board had wanted when you started this, you wanted Ventura County to be the county of choice for farmworkers.
That's right.
And I think the program that you're building here is building that trust, uh, in both our, for our farmworkers and for our growers. And just really congratulate you and thank you for your passion. And, and developing this program, you're really building the jet airplane in the middle of the air, right? And it's evolving as it goes, but you're following your instincts and you're creating something that's really necessary and making our community stronger. So, thank you.
We want people to come to Ventura County. We want people to come to Ventura County and work.
And wish that. Do the two of you want to motion to approve in second?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It has been motioned in second. We will take a vote now, but I think I know what it is. Thank you. Uh, can we please vote?
I had it, but it didn't do anything.
Oh, his screen is not acting. Yes, Laurie, can you do that for him? Thank you very much. A motion has been approved unanimously. Thank you very much. We will now be going into closed session. There's nothing to report out. So thank you very much for all that have attended. Thank you for our interpreters and have a wonderful day.